Notice of this meeting was given to all board members and associates in a meeting notice dated April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Furthermore, on that date, a copy of such notice was sent to the Times through Chantonian and the Clerk of the Township of Hamilton. It was also posted on the bulletin board at the entrance to the boardroom in the Hamilton Square Administrative Building. Please rise to the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call? Harvey?
Here.
Ratanca?
Here.
Dr. McSheen?
Here.
Soto?
Here.
Miss Stanton?
Here.
Byrne?
Here.
Dr. Salentano?
Here.
Dr. Farrar?
Here.
Thornton?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved. Second. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
Whereas NJSA ten colon four dash thirteen requires adoption of the board to go into executive session, be it resolved that the board pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, New Jersey Title eighteen A, and the Hamilton Township Board of Education bylaw, number zero one six six, hereby enter executive session to discuss a matter involving student matter, labor matters, human resource matters, and matters falling under the attorney-client privilege. Be it further resolved that the minutes of this executive session shall be made public following formal action by the board and/or at the conclusion of any investigation, due process proceeding, or litigation, so long as not prohibited by law and so long as the need for maintaining confidentiality no longer exists.
Need a second on that? Need a second.
I'm sorry. Call right. I'm going to call the meeting back to order. At this time, we are going to move the agenda around, and I would like to start off with awards and presentations, and I would like to invite Mrs. Landolfi Collins up. Oh, well, there we go. Yeah, I served me.
Where are we going? Where do we show?
You getting up? I'm staying here. I'm staying here. Guess I'll get up.
Are we moving?
Yes.
That's my better judgment.
You're on the cusp.
Ready yet?
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. My name is John.
We're here at Why Not?
What do you mean now? Good evening, everyone. My name's John, and I'm a neighbor here in Reynolds. This is Ms. and Ms. Jen, Mr. Reynolds and Ms. Women, Ms. DeCarcio. April autism awareness month, and we want to show you how great our program is. Enjoy the show.
Welcome to our presentation, A Day in the Life at Reynolds. During a typical learning day, students take part in both academics and life skills. These include subjects such as ELA, math, social studies, science, PE, health, and study support. Students work on tasks, begins to promote provocational skills in their classes.
With our newly acquired picnic tables, students now have the opportunity to work outdoors. They can also participate in outdoor research as in a safe place.
Nathan, what type of job do you like to do?
Classroom jobs are very important for student morning. Each hour says, "Prefer your responsibilities and the class and the works when supposed to be careful and for future planning and independence."
Robert, what are you doing?
Ooh, sparks!
What did you get?
You got it.
What did you get?
Iron.
What is that, A?
It's full.
Students work in the office, helping task, tests, next, next stuff, mailboxes, and pulling staples to help prepare the team for their future jobs.
Welcome to the Reynolds Marketplace.
Reynolds Marketplace is operated by teachers and students of the autistic and multiply disabled classes. The market is used to teach the ASD and MD students provocative skills as well as social skills. These skills are essential to assist the students for preparation of future employment.
Here at Reynolds, our program consists of students and teachers collaborating together to take, take fill, and deliver orders to staff throughout the building.
Students were scooping green cheese and butter, feeling more drugs, was stuck in the coffee bar, and taking every toy.
Students deliver order forms to staff throughout the building weekly. Students then collect the forms and take out of items orderly.
After telling orders, students and their teachers work together to fill the orders of delivery. Students then deliver the orders to classrooms daily.
Community-based instruction is used to strengthen students' provocative skills by going on trips to local stores within the community. To enhance students' social skills, we dine at community restaurants where students order and pay for their food while socializing with their classmates. Twice a month, our program travels by district bus to local businesses and restaurants in Hamilton.
Some places we have visited ShopRite, Walmart, Kohl's, Ollie's, Barnes &amp; Noble, Quaker Bread Mall, Second Ave, Fifth Store, Fifth Store five below, Mayco's, Dollar Tree, Pet's Mart.
During the holiday season, we visited Quaker Bread Mall and went into Santa, who he said remained the nicest.
At local restaurants, students order their food, pay for their own meals, then we force appropriate manners by eating together and socializing with peers.
Texas warehouse open for private lunch for our students.
On some days, students walk to the local shopping center to visit ShopRite and the dollar store to purchase items for the marketplace and for other special events.
Program trips are held for students to interact with each other in a social setting. We go for bowling and play laser tag. These trips enhance social skills of expected norms when participating in an event and in the community.
Week RMS is taking part in autism spirit. Students that drop the door here come together to support our diversity.
Thank you to Mrs. Landolfi Collins and the Reynolds PTA for the donation of our new tables and umbrellas. Special thanks to facilities and maintenance for installing our fence. We love it!
We, we here at Why Not are very thankful for all of the support we receive from the staff and student at RMS and for the support of our community. Thank you.
Just want to take a mo-
Just want to take a moment to thank our Reynolds students and staff. Thank you, principal for coming out. They have provided coffee in the back, so thanks in the back also. You guys do a wonderful job, wonderful presentation. Way more skills at the presentation than I had, so another round of applause.
Hey, Jim? So, can you, you know, that projector down? Not the second one, you had a chance though.
Let everyone get settled, and at this time, we're going to move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. Hard act to follow there. The bulk of my report tonight is going to be on the budget presentation and budget hearing, which is coming up in a couple of minutes. Also, while we were in closed session, the April twenty twenty-four BOE slide presentation was put together. Each month, we have a slide presentation of the great things happening in our district. Not only can you see it at the board meeting, but it's also online on our website. Couple of upcoming events in our district. We are talking about summer. We have the twenty twenty-four HDSD Summer Camp. It's open for registration. We have a number of sessions already, already fully, fully booked. Tech Night, our big night for the school year, is tomorrow night, five to eight, Crockett Middle School. We are going to have a job fair on May first. That's going to be from four thirty to six thirty, and that's at Steiner High School in the gym. So if you know somebody who's looking for a job, a teaching job, or a position in one of our offices as a secretary, or a custodian, or maintenance person, please come out to the job fair or tell them we have that job fair available. Our Whole Child Affair, Whole Child Fair is May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four, six PM to eight PM, and that's at Hamilton West. Our next and last DCR meeting, District Community Relations Meeting, is May fourteenth. That's at Reynolds Middle School. We have a decision day in our district for our seniors, and there are multiple paths for our seniors to make decisions. There is college, there is career, there is military, and there's the trades. And we celebrate all four of those choices that our students make. And so, we will kick off our district decision day on May twenty-second, and then at each of our high schools, May twenty-third will be Steiner, May thirtieth will be Nottingham, and June fifth will be West. And, hard to believe, but we have to talk graduation. Graduation is Thursday, June twentieth, two thousand twenty-four, and on our website, you will see the times for each of our three high schools. Couple of other things here. Today is Administrative Professionals Day, and yesterday was Bus Driver Appreciation Appreciation Day. So I'd like to thank our administrative assistants and our bus drivers for the hard work that they do every day in our school district to make things happen. So if you get a chance, thank you. If you get a chance, please thank them too. Our Facility Strategic Planning Committee, since we last met, the committee is now beginning to work on developing a final report. We have another meeting in May, on May twenty-eighth, at Steiner High School at six o'clock. And again, anybody can join the Facility Strategic Planning Committee. You don't have to come to every meeting. Come to one meeting. Come out, have a say, listen to what we're talking about. We're talking about the future of this district. What facilities do we need so that our students can learn and we have enough space to do the things we want to do educationally and extracurricularly with athletics and clubs and different activities for our students? The Special Education Parent Advisory Group, CTAG, will meet on May thirteenth, and again, that is their Whole Child Fair date. We've been working on a celebration all year long, and it's called Difference Makers. And this year, in the Difference Makers, we've reinforced people in our district who have gone the extra mile. We have actually sent out a hundred and eighty-six letters that include certificates and a thank you card and a sticker. One hundred and eighty-six people in this district have been recognized by somebody else in this district for the hard work that they're doing, the difference that they're making. It doesn't mean it's only a hundred and eighty-six people. It just means that those folks were recognized by others, and we are still accepting nominations. As I mentioned, Summer Camp, we have six hundred and three campers, and thirteen camps are full. This year, our theme is Every Day Counts. There are thirty-eight days left in the school year. I want to remind our school community, which includes our students, parents, faculty, staff, administration, and members of the community, that each of these thirty-eight days counts towards our students' success. Daily attendance counts. Grades count. Student behavior counts. Let's finish the year strong and continue to focus on these three areas for the remainder of the school year. So, at the last budget meeting, when I presented, I said, "This district is at an inflection point, and we need to make some big decisions. We need to work towards those three goals of attendance, academic, academics, and behaviors." And part of the academic end will be some of the work that we have been doing with the multi-tiered system of support. And in May, Ms. Audino is going to do a presentation on MTSS at the board meeting. This is a framework that helps educators provide academic and behavioral strategies for students with various academic and/or behavioral needs. And so, we've had success with MTSS. We will have a presentation to explain to the community what we're doing. The board has already seen some of this work that we're doing, but we want to also show you how we're going to advance that moving forward. And then on the item of making moves forward for our district, I am very excited to announce tonight that at tonight's board meeting, on our agenda is a memorandum of agreement between our district and the College of New Jersey. It is the largest dual enrollment agreement ever in the history of our district, and may be one of the largest in the state approved at one time. All twenty-six of our Advanced Placement classes in all three of our high schools will be eligible for dual enrollment credit with the College of New Jersey starting in September of this coming year. This is a huge step forward for our district and an amazing opportunity for our students. Thank you to Mr. Scotto and the College of New Jersey for working to make this possible for our students. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Rocco. At this time, do I have any Board of Education members that have any announcements or comments that they would like to make? Ms. Harvey?
Yes. Is anyone here? I just wanted to bring to the attention of the community that there is a program for ninth grade students that they can apply for, oneprojectnewjersey.org. It is a scholarship program where students can work on a program, and it involves community service that will be conducted in their tenth grade year, so sophomore students. And the applications are due May first, and there's a five hundred dollar stipend for the student who is selected from each school. So that's an opportunity. I believe the guidance counselors now have the information, but I wanted to alert the community to that program.
Thank you, Ms. Harvey. Miss Stanton?
Yes, I would like to thank the fantastic students and staff here at Reynolds Middle School for including Mrs. Soto and myself in their beautiful breakfast in honor of Autism Acceptance Month. On top of the delicious breakfast, Mrs. Soto and I were fortunate enough to have won some decorative plates that were made by the students of Reynolds Marketplace. I'm so glad to see growing inclusion here within our district, and I look forward to spending more time with our autism and multiple disability students.
Thank you, Ms. Stanton. Dr. Farrar?
I just want to let everyone know that on Friday, Clarkner School is going, the fifth graders from Clarkner School are going to be at the new Burlington store at Marketplace. They, the school has been adopted by that store. I don't have all the details. Do you, Dr. Rocco? That you and me both. you how we're going to advance that moving forward. And then on the item of making moves forward for our district, I am very excited to announce tonight that at tonight's board meeting, on our agenda is a memorandum of agreement between our district and the College of New Jersey. It is the largest dual enrollment agreement ever in the history of our district and may be one of the largest in the state approved at one time. All 26 of our Advanced Placement classes in all three of our high schools will be eligible for dual enrollment credit with the College of New Jersey, starting in September of this coming year. This is a huge step forward for our district and an amazing opportunity for our students. Thank you to Mr. Scotto and the College of New Jersey for working to make this possible for our students. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Rocco. At this time, do I have any Board of Education members that have any announcements or comments that they would like to make? Ms. Harvey?
Yes. Is anyone here? I just wanted to bring to the attention of the community that there is a program for ninth grade students that they can apply for, OneProjectNewJersey.org. It is a scholarship program where students can work on a program, and it involves community service that will be conducted in their 10th grade year, so sophomore students. And the applications are due May 1st, and there's a $500 stipend for the student who is selected from each school. So that's an opportunity. I believe the guidance counselors now have the information, but I wanted to alert the community to that program.
Thank you, Ms. Harvey. Stanton?
Yes, I would like to thank the fantastic students and staff here at Reynolds Middle School for including Mrs. Soto and myself in their beautiful breakfast in honor of Autism Acceptance Month. On top of a delicious breakfast, Mrs. Soto and I were fortunate enough to have won some decorative plates that were made by the students of Reynolds Marketplace. I'm so glad to see growing inclusion here within our district, and I look forward to spending more time with our autism and multiple disability students.
Thank you, Ms. Stanton. Dr. Farrar?
I just want to let everyone know that on Friday, Klockner School is going, the fifth graders from Klockner School are going to be at the new Burlington store at Marketplace. They, the school has been adopted by that store. I don't have all the details, do you, Dr. Rocco?
No, I've just been told where to be and at what time.
You and me both. So it will be exciting, but the community connections that are being made with our district are just fantastic, very exciting.
Thank you, Dr. Farrar. Any other board members? So we will move on to our student representatives from Steiner, Ms. Simpson.
Hello, everyone. My name is Melissa Simpson, and I will be speaking on behalf of Steiner. This month has been a crazy month for Steiner. We've had so much things going on, so sit tight in your seats because I'm going to say a lot. So first, I'd like to start off with congratulating our Steiner dance team as they won first at their competition. And we'd also like to congratulate Mahi Anasia. She is the first competitive senior solo that Steiner has ever had, so congratulations to her. And she also won more than three honorable titles, as well as third place overall. We'd also like to recognize the Honorable Upper Administrator, Dr. Copeland, who spoke with the BSU, and he gave us so much inspiring and encouraging words and just inspired us with his journey and how he made it to the top. So we really appreciate his visit. We recognize Autism Awareness Month with beautiful decorations and designs made by our special students, as well as hearing their inspiring words on the morning announcements. This month, the Black Student Union, they went to visit Delaware at the historic HBCU, Delaware State University, as well as visit the Delaware History Museum in Wilmington. And it was a great experience. I wasn't there myself, but just hearing from the other students in that club, it seemed like an awesome time, and they got to learn more about their roots, which is the goal at the end of the day. We'd like to say a special congrats to Jasraj Boesia and Brianna Velazquez for placing top 10 finalists at the FBLA State Leadership Conference. And we would also like to wish a very good luck to Brianna Velazquez as she will be moving on to the FBLA Nationals this Friday. And it basically encouraged to start driver's education from a young age, and that kids shouldn't be learning it just immediately at 17, but rooted in them at younger ages so that they grow up in those ways. We also had our college fair on April 20th, and we also had our a cappella showcase, which was Aka Awesome. The tones were on top, and the voices were just beautiful and amazing. It was an amazing time. And as for our sports, all of our teams have been on fire, and they are so busy bringing in these wins. Our lacrosse team, softball, track, and baseball, they've just been on fire lately. And we'd like to give a special shout out to Brenna Riddle as she has earned her 100 career draw controls in lacrosse. And we'd also like to shout out Mia Pope as she earned Player of the Week on NJ.com. We'd also like to recognize the Ford by 800 relay team on the track and field, which placed second at the Cherokee Track Meet. And lastly, we'd also recognize the Jazz Band as they placed second place overall at the Jackson Liberty Festival, and they also earned superior rating, Best Trumpet Section, and Tyler Gilson won Outstanding Soloist, as well as Mark Reyes winning Outstanding Musician. And for our upcoming events, we have Mr. SHS on May 2nd, and if you guys have nothing to do on the day, definitely come because it will be hilarious. The boys are going to show out their talents, so definitely come if you have the time. We will be having our Senior Prom on June 7th, and as the Tech Night will be tomorrow at Crockett, I believe. And we also have our Educator Fair on May 1st. And right now, so many seniors are committing to their schools, they're making their final decisions, so definitely stay tuned for that as we have our Senior Commitment Day, Decision Day on May 23rd, where seniors will show off their merchandise from whatever path that they will be choosing for their futures. And lastly, we'd like to wish a good luck to our DECA Nationalists as two students have made it to the finals, and they will be doing that this Friday, so good luck to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Simpson. And now Nottingham, Ms. Brick.
As spring approaches, we have some exciting events that have taken place in our school community for the month of April. April 22nd marked a significant milestone for our school as we celebrated the opening day of our baseball field. The event was made even more special as Mr. Capone, a beloved member of our faculty, threw the first ceremonial pitch. As he nears the end of his remarkable 40-year career, we are deeply grateful for his dedication and service to our school community. In recognition of his commitment to promoting safe driving, Mr. Capone was recently honored with the Teacher Hero Award sponsored by the NJM Insurance Group. This prestigious award is a testament to his tireless efforts to instill responsible behavior among our students and ensure their safety on the roads. Our school spirit was on full display at the recent Mr. North Star event, which drew a large and enthusiastic turnout. This annual tradition is not only showcases the talent and charisma of our students, but also fosters a sense of unity within our school community. On the athletic front, I'm thrilled to announce that the Northwest softball team emerged victorious in the North Star Classic softball tournament, demonstrating their skill and determination on the field. Additionally, our winter and spring athletes were treated to a delicious pasta dinner, courtesy of the NABC, in recognition of their hard work and dedication throughout the season. In the realm of track and field, our students continue to excel. Callie Holliday secured a first place in shot put and fourth in discus at the MCT, while Kelsey Brennan and Zayasia Williams claimed first place in javelin. Jamal Valentino also impressed with a third place finish in discus. Furthermore, our sprint medley team of Talon Kodwa, Corey Thomas, Robert Addo, and Mo Tore showcased their talent by securing a second place finish. Looking ahead, we are excited to announce that signups for fall sports will begin at the end of May, offering our students the opportunity to further pursue their athletic passions. Additionally, tickets for the senior prom and post-prom are now on sale with a much-anticipated event scheduled for May 17th. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brick. And now for Hamilton West, Ms. Ajai.
Good evening, esteemed members and family and friends. The students of Hamilton West High School have had a very busy month. From Spring Spirit Week to junior prom, Hamilton West has done it all. To begin, let's start with sports. Hamilton West varsity baseball team has had an amazing season, so far their record being six wins and three losses. And I would just like to recognize Joe Rad. I'm sorry. Should I start over? Good evening, esteemed members of the board, family, and friends. The students of Hamilton West High School have had a very busy month. From Spring Spirit Week to junior prom, Hamilton High School has done it all. To begin, let's start with sports. Hamilton West varsity baseball team has had an amazing season, so far their record being six wins and three losses. And I would just like to recognize Joe Rad and Joe Malone for their amazing pitches that has helped the team succeed in every game. The girls' lacrosse team has also had, has also been dominating their season. As a matter of fact, they just won a game against Ewing last April, I mean this April 13th, with a score of 14 to 1. Congratulations to Morgan Bressler, Amelia Reed, and Ava Regalinski for steadily scoring in each game. Good job. Moving on to our extracurriculars, Hamilton West has had many robust extracurriculars and sports. On March 19th, we had our annual eighth grade orientation, where different clubs, sports, and groups such as peer leadership, baseball, and drama club introduced themselves to incoming freshmen in hopes of gaining new members. On March 18th, the 2024 senior class trip to Dorney Park was announced. On March 28th, Hamilton West held its eighth annual job fair in the gymnasium. This allowed students to get a head start on their career and connect with local businesses and companies. On March 20th, students were able to visit Mercer County Community College to explore other options. On April 9th, Hamilton West partnered with Princeton Tuxedo by Sarnow to offer $50 off of tux rentals. The business also promised to donate $10 from each prom rental to Hamilton West Project Graduation. And on Friday, April 12th, junior prom was held at 6:00 p.m. On April 15th, junior prom tickets went on sale, senior prom tickets went on sale, and this is very exciting as it's one of the last events for the graduating seniors to get together. Speaking of senior activities, yesterday on April 24th, the annual senior class lake party was announced by Project Graduation. They agreed upon the date for the lake party is June 17th, and it will be held at Lippid Lake. Some exciting news, breaking news, starting in 2024 to 2025 school year, Hamilton West will have their buzzing mascot brought to light. We will no longer have a giant hornet costume, but instead, many people in tiny wings. Lastly, but not, last but not least, students will be getting ready for senior prom on March, on May 3rd. So excited for this. Thank you, and see you next month.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ajai. So I just want to thank you ladies very much because it's so wonderful hearing you guys talk about all the wonderful things going on in your school. Thank you for highlighting the great events, and thank you for highlighting the accomplishments of your fellow students. So thank you very much. So at this time, we're going to move on to public hearing of the annual budget for 2024, 2025 school year.
Yes, yep. While the screen's coming down here just for a moment, I'm going to, this is the public hearing for the budget, so over the last two months, I've done budget presentations. In February, I did a presentation on the, and I'll walk back and forth. So I did a meeting in February on what the big picture items were, what were the big drivers, what were the things that we had to deal with when it came to the budget? And then last month, I actually gave a presentation on what the budget was and what we included. And I'm just seeing if this will go on. I'm just waiting for that to go on. I did it. Okay. So this is a little different than last month's presentation, but the content is exactly the same after the conversation at the board table. It's just formatted a little differently. Also, last month's presentation and this month's presentation, last month's already posted on the board agenda, next month's, this month's will be posted tomorrow on the board website. So just the calendar, this doesn't start a month ago. We actually work on this going back, actually before December, but here's the dates of some of the markers that we hit as we go through the budget calendar. The highlighted part is where we are today. Upon approval of the Board of Education, the budget is then submitted to the DOE tomorrow. We always set and start our budget season with goals. Our five goals that are set here are the same goals that we had last year. We are, we are setting goals of equity, learning acceleration, New Jersey student learning standards, security, safety, and infrastructure, and budget stability. And those are the five goals that we use to build out this budget. And one of the reasons why we establish goals is it also helps us focus on what's important here, but also trying to avoid the ups and downs in budget seasons, put a lot of things in one year, have to cut the next year, put a lot of things back. So we try to stay focused. I did say last month, I will say again, and I said in my superintendent's report, we are at an inflection point in our school district. We need to focus on a number of issues, growing enrollment, rising costs, aging facilities, and student needs. And we are working on those things, but as we build budgets, we have to focus on those areas, and those areas are subsections of the five goals that I listed on a previous slide. And when we do that, we need to fund for now and the future. And an example of that is the aging facilities. And as I mentioned before in my report, I will mention to you again, we have a Facility Strategic Planning Committee. It's been meeting for months and months and months. It's open to anyone who wants to attend it. We will be producing a report shortly. We will be submitting that report to the Board of Education, and then the Board of Education will make decisions based on recommendations made from that committee, but we need, we need to fund those things. Average age of our facilities is well over 70 years, approaching 80 years on average of our facilities. The youngest building in our inventory right now is Crockett Middle School, well over 30 years old. So some quick facts about our budget development. We have a focus on our goals, our initiatives, and enhancements. We did get a state aid increase closer to our allotted amount that we've been expecting for years and years and years, and I'll show you that chart going back 11 or 12 years, that we did not get anything close to that. We do have enrollment and costs that continue to increase, and as a result, we need to increase staff and increase budget lines to address enrollment and the needs of our students. And then we're focusing on repairs of our facilities and upgrades and maintaining them over time. In the seven budgets that I've built here with my team and the Board of Education and the building principals, we've always had a focus of maintaining and upgrading our facilities as we've gone along. Right? So what are our drivers? So increased enrollment. In my previous two presentations, I showed you enrollment increases. I'll show you a little bit of that today, but specifically, we drilled down to English language learners and how that group of students has exploded in our community, and as a result, we need to have new curriculum, new resources, new staff. So increasing enrollments in general and in pockets of students. Our health benefits, always a driver, always expensive. Charter school. The charter school that we talked about, that we were in opposition to and still in opposition to, was approved by the DOE. The amount of money, and I want to be clear here, the amount of money that we list here that has to be allotted to charter schools comes out of a formula from the DOE, not a number we make up, it's a number that they tell us we need to allot per pupil. Also understand a couple of things. Rumors about having a charter school in a district that makes a district money, that's false. Give you an example. We only get 25 cents on every dollar that costs us on transporting students to a charter school. So the cost is really 75 cents per dollar we spend. Okay? So it does not make a district money. If it did, every district in New Jersey would be asking for charter schools in their communities, and they're not. Busing costs continue to go up. Last month, I showed you the cost of busing and the cost of gasoline going up over 80%. Facilities continue to repair and maintain, gets more expensive every year. Our program needs, anticipated growth in special education, and out-of-district costs continue to go up. And additional staff. We need additional staff in the district to address the needs. So state aid, we did get an additional, an addition, an added amount of state aid this year, and we're very pleased with that. I want everybody to know, we appreciate the additional state aid, but as you can see over an 11-year time span, we were not allotted the state aid that we're supposed to be getting. And you can see, we're starting to get there. And if you break that down into some more charts, you can see that the state aid for transportation is fully funding us at $5.2 million. But let me clarify, because I know Ms. Hatwood is saying, please clarify right now. That $5.2 million is what the formula says we should get. We spend well over $5.2 million in transportation. This is just what the state will fund, and they're funding what they say they should be funded. Same is true with special education. They are funding us at a little over $14 million. We actually pay much more than $14 million in special education costs. Our district's spending, if you look at it, and the state will run formulas, and it will talk about adequacy, and if you run the formula now based on how much our And if you run the formula now based on how much our budget is, how much state aid we're getting and lots of other variables in there, the state is saying that our budget is $30.5 million under adequate. What does that mean? The state is telling us that our budget should be 30 million higher. Okay? What's this new budget going to bring to Hamilton Township? In the area of instruction and textbooks, you're going to see new textbooks for math, nine, 12 and K5. New advanced placement textbooks with, which align with our new dual enrollment programs with the College of New Jersey, we're getting textbooks in biology, macroeconomic, psychology and world history. New accounting textbooks, new intro to business and new personal finance textbooks. Every year, we work on making sure that students at our middle schools and high schools receive new band equipment. So the new instrument rotation this year will be at Weston Grace. We also make sure that at our middle schools and high schools, we are getting new equipment and materials for the arts. So at North and Crockett, they will be getting new art equipment and we rotate that every year. And also we'll be doing our STEAM and applied technology enhancements, six through 12. So at our secondary division. Other things that you can look for in our curriculum and instruction enhancements, we're going to expand our Orton Gillingham training for students who are struggling, struggling readers. We have had an initiative for many years here now, and I'll say many years because this is my seventh year in Hamilton, so I can say many, uh, at, at the libraries. If you have a student that goes to middle school or high school, you're going to know that our libraries look different. They are more inviting. They are painted, new carpet, new furniture. Why? Because we are trying to make our libraries places where kids want to go, want to go as an individual and study, want to go in small groups and work on a project, want to go as a class and do class work. Also, we do a lot of our tutoring in our library. So it's an inviting space where we actually have furniture that moves and can adjust based on student needs. We are now doing that at the elementary level. We've done the high school, we've done the middle school, we are now doing that at the elementary school. We always put on high quality professional development for our staff. And so we will continue to fund that and increase funding on that. And we will continue to not only maintain, but enhance the instructional platforms that we have in place for teaching and learning for our teachers and our students. Within special education, you're going to see data teams at our middle schools. New curriculum in our LLD classrooms and resource rooms and in-class resource rooms. We're going to have full data teams at our elementary levels that are tied to our MTSS system. And next month, Ms. Audino will explain how that works, why that's important and some of the progress that we've seen this year. We are also going to expand our mental health services across the district and we are putting social thinking class at the middle school level. We always put a focus on security. Last year, we put in our weapons detection systems, we put in our private security. This year, we are going to continue to enhance our security and we have layers of security. We are going to have door security enhancement at all of our buildings for next year. And we are going to maintain the current funding for existing safety and security across the district. Technology is also a big part of this. So you can see all the work that has been done. And if you've come to budget presentations before, this chart used to go back to 2014. So we've kind of locked that off and we've moved beyond that because in 2014, we had house modems at our middle schools, at our elementary schools, and that's how our kids got wifi and staff. Now we have state-of-the-art systems, wifi systems. Uh, and, and so you can see some of the work that we're doing. Uh, prior to this work and this commitment by the Board of Education, you had devices that were seven, eight, nine, 10 years old that people were using, teachers and students. If you do anything with a laptop or a computer, a 10-year-old device is a paperweight, you should not be using it. So we have a replenishment cycle here to make sure that we have updated equipment and also that helps with cybersecurity. And then replacing panels and projectors across the district as our teachers use those as part of the learning process. And we're also going to enhance more security cameras and technology across the district. We've always committed to facilities upgrades. You can see a number of projects here. On the top left-hand side, this is some federal money and some state money that we will be using for things like HVAC at Wilson and University Heights. Uh, we're going to do windows at North and a cafeteria ramp, uh, at West. Our ROD grants, regular operating district grants are state money. So that's 40% of the cost is paid by the state. And we're going to be doing some work on roofing at all three of our high schools and HVAC at Laelor. We always do a lease purchase and that's where we get our musical instruments, our art equipment and our science equipment and furniture for the district. Also some maintenance and operational vehicles when they come to end of life and we need to replace them. On the right-hand side, you're going to see other work that we're going to be doing. We have committed to upgrading the high school library, uh, high school auditoriums. So you can see phase one and two of high school auditorium upgrades are in there. Uh, we will make a capital reserve deposit to make sure that we have money to continue to do maintenance and other construction. We do need to do upgrades at our high school and middle school locker rooms. A million dollars allotted to security upgrades, uh, and then other electronic upgrades and cafeteria upgrades. Capital reserve is funded for our boilers at the Galleard and Crockett. We're going to convert one of our shops to a classroom at Crockett. Our science labs and media circulation desks, we were going, we are going to make ADA compliant. And then we have some exterior improvements at Crockett Middle School. Included in the enrollment increases, the program increases, all the other increases that we've been talking about, we are increasing staff. Two ESL teachers, two bilingual education teachers, three special ed teachers, two elementary vice principals at the two largest elementary schools in our district, which are each over 500. One will approach 550 next year in our projection. One new bus driver, three elementary interventionists, one IT specialist and a secretary analyst shared between student services and the business office. If you look at our budget, you're going to see that we have a balanced budget and I'll let you take a look at that for a second. You can see our revenues versus our expenditures. And again, this will be up online tomorrow for you to take a look at it. Uh, this is what the, the board actually votes on tonight, and this is the budget for the 24, 25 school year, a balanced budget as we showed you in the previous slide here. This is what it is for the board to vote on. And the question that always, uh, comes up, which I say we probably should do on the second slide of this presentation, is what is the cost to the average homeowner? So the average household is $217,005. The tax impact per average household per year is $70.77 or per month is $5.90. The tax impact per $100,000 assessed value is $32.61. And just a budget summary of some of the things we're talking about, focused on the goals, addressing the drivers, enhancing instruction, enhancing technology, getting support staff, certified staff, administrative staff and support staff to address growth, focusing on our inflection point and moving forward, providing training and high-quality training for our staff and addressing facility needs. With that, that is the end of the presentation. Uh, we are going to bring the screen up, allow the board to go back to the dais to ask any questions they might have or to open it up for any other questions. Thank you.
So I'm going to open up questions, um, first to any board members that might have a question, but I do want to let the public know, we will be opening up after that to the public in case you have any questions on the budget. Okay? So I'll start with any board members. Do any board members have any questions in regards to the budget?
Your comments, what do you want?
Questions or comments either?
So I have some questions on the two new VPs that was approved by majority of the board. I think we're talking about a 12-month position?
Correct.
As opposed to a 10 and a half month position? So what would be the reason to keep them there for 12 months, which is, you know, at the elementary schools, the biggest problem during the, during the summer at the elementary schools may be some late registrations. Okay? But, uh, I didn't support this at all. Okay? And I probably won't, and I won't support it because I think if you look at the numbers, what was the reason we, we even, uh, made that suggestion to edit VPs?
So it is an enrollment issue and these are the two largest schools in the district. And I think last month, when I went over the numbers, it was 100 and I'm going to say my number is probably off a little bit, about 123 student difference between the, the, one of the largest schools and the next largest school, but most of the schools are 200 students less than these two large schools. And these two schools are our fastest growing schools where we have portables outside. I believe they each have four sections per grade or will have it by next year. And then if, if you don't mind, Mr. Salantano, the question of 12-month versus 10 and a half month, uh, the Administrators Association and the board negotiated out any 10 and a half month present, uh, positions probably years ago. Right? So as I've spoken with their representative, their president, uh, they are all 12-month positions.
Okay. But I'm looking at down the road. We have 17 elementary schools. Like I said, I could go for something, if they need help, I can go for something. Just at this level, doesn't make, doesn't make any, doesn't make any sense to me monetarily. Okay? So we have a couple of other schools coming up on the cusp, I think 350, four something. So next year, the year after, or maybe even during the year, are we going to have, well, we're going to be proposing another VP? So why don't we just say it now? If we're going to have a VP at all 17 elementary schools, you know, put it on, put it on at one at a time. I don't, personally, I don't like being piecemeal like this. Not that you're doing it, it's just that that seems what the process is. And it's, it's very, it's demeaning in a way to think that, you know, nobody's looking at this. I'll give them all the help they want, but let's make it reasonable. Like, I mean, there's a few other positions tonight similar to this. Okay? And we, we needed to look at it because we may be having an enrollment explosion, but we have to think of another way to do this. Do we need another school? Do we need to re, do we, we need to reallocate the youngsters in a way in which it makes sense? At one time, this Board of Education talked about, um, a, a different configuration like K to three, five to seven, all of that kind of stuff. Right? And there were some, there were some nice configurations. The only problem is we didn't have the facilities to handle it.
Right.
And right now, the only place we could possibly build anything in the district of which we own would be the, well, maybe not the only thing, but one of the only things would be the Crockett property because when we, we agreed to that, that was a future consideration. Right? But we never talked about that. Okay? I'm just trying to keep it, keep it reasonable where I'm, I'm trying to prevent what may and probably will happen down the road. Next year, uh, I just use schools, uh, saying in, uh, University Heights, they need a VP because the other two, two schools haven't. You know what goes on. Two schools have it and what happened to the comments and the position that we have taken that if it's good for one school, it's good for the other? We did that at the high school. In other words, we think that all the high schools should have the same thing at the same time because they're producing the same product. That is not accurate. I know it's not accurate, but it's a good intention. I understand the intention. Okay? But, and that's what I'm looking at here. I'm saying this to me, it may work for those two schools, but I think you're going to have a headache down the road.
So good comments, a couple of things. I, I smiled a little bit when you brought up a couple of the items because it's exactly what we talk about in the facility strategic plan almost every month with the committee. So grade configuration, adjustments to, uh, to sending areas, how do we balance things out? Do we need a new school? Do we just need additions? Those are all being talked about and recommendations that are going to be made to the board. On the issue of the VPs, we've actually been talking about the need for VPs for a couple of years now as the growth has happened at these particular buildings. The estimate is that these are the two buildings that have, well, they have gone over 500 and they'll continue to stay over 500 or grow. The others are not estimated to go near that at this point. And whether that's the demographer or the history of those buildings, they're nowhere near, I think we said at 450, we'd start talking about, uh, do we or don't we need it? Also, these two VPs would not, they will be assigned to, and the majority of their work will be done at the buildings that are assigned to those two buildings. But they will also pick up some evaluations at the elementary division to lighten the loot, load for everybody. Um, but we have, we've talked about this. It's not one of those things that's piecemeal. And all these issues of facilities, uh, sending areas, enrollment in particular areas, these are all the hot topics that have been coming up as we've talked for months and months at the Facility Strategic Planning Committee.
Still, still not on the tip of my tongue.
Everyone else comments?
Yeah, I just had a comment about that as well. Uh, I just wanted the verification from you. I'd looked a little bit myself, but isn't it the case that Robbins, Philly, Windsor, West Windsor, Princeton, the districts that surround us have elementary school vice principals at schools that are smaller than Wilson?
A lot of them do.
Okay, thank you.
They have the tax revenue to pay for it. That's the problem we have here. Their, their ratables are much greater than ours in Hamilton. You would think we would be because we are a bigger community. However, uh, the, the, I'm just going to give you a, for instance, in other words, the average assessed home in West Windsor was probably around 300,000 or 400,000 versus one of the averages that we have here, which is like 217. I would really like to know what the increase is on, uh, we have, we had 100, 217. I'd like to know what's 350 is and 450 is in Hamilton because we do have some houses that are paying.
Do the math for that.
Can you hear me? I'm sorry.
So, Mr. Salantano, I do believe that there was a slide, um, and maybe Dr. Rocco, if you could provide that. The average house was assessed at, I believe, 217.
217.05.
And we had the estimated, um, impact to the tax increase on that. But then I think right underneath that, it said every additional 100,000, you can add this amount.
I thought that was for 100,000.
32.61.
So 32.61.
For every additional 100, okay. All right. I, I thought it was, yeah, I thought it was 100,000. My bad.
And I understand that obviously those houses, those, some of those neighborhoods and some of those towns have houses that are worth more than some of our houses in some areas of Hamilton. But that said, we can't expect to keep up academically if we're not putting in the work.
Yeah, I, I understand what you're saying, Meg, but I don't think we're keeping anybody back academically. I think that's up to the, that's up to our teaching staff, that's up through our administration and up to the parents. Okay? Because putting a VP in each one of these schools, I don't believe is going to make that great of a difference, if any difference at all, because it's just not equitable across the board. And that's something I couldn't support because I think you can do it another way. I said that last month, you can do it another way. I'll give you all the help you want. But what happens here is now you put people, you're overloading our, um, the Administrators Association, what is it called? Um, the supervisors and administrators, right? You're, you're, we're overloading it. At one time, I'll go back maybe, I'll use 10 years. We had less than 50 administrators in that association. Now you're approaching 80. All right? Now, you may think, well, that's what we needed. Do we need them all? I don't know if we need them all. I don't get that feeling that we need them all, only because of the mere fact that we never discussed this. We're having a discussion tonight, which I'm enjoying because I'm trying, I'm, I'm reading you, you're reading me. And I think, you know, I'm getting, I'm getting it off my chest as to where I stand. Right? And I wish everybody else would think a little bit and say to themselves, well, is there another opportunity? Is there another way to do it? And the way it came up at last month's meeting, I didn't appreciate that. I didn't appreciate that. Okay?
Yeah, just to piggyback on what Mr. Salantano said, and for those who weren't here, last month, so we, originally Dr. Rocco wanted to have, can you hear me? Can you hear me now? Um, last month, Dr. Rocco proposed that we add one vice principal to the elementary school. But then a proposal was made by a board member that we have two, um, vice principals for the elementary. And in the space of about five minutes, we came up with the money and we were able to kind of move money from here to there. And so I'm going to ask a very unpopular question because it's, it hasn't been asked. What can we do without? What can we take away from this budget? Because some of us. Because some of us, myself, I don't want to raise the taxes at all. I raised that comment last month, and I was told, and I appreciate this, that our seniors can freeze their property taxes. And I think that's wonderful. But they're freezing them at already really high rates. And a study, a survey was just recently taken in New Jersey, and more than 50% of our residents and our constituents are struggling with some of the same things that we brought up on our budget. Transportation, there's going to be a new gas tax, food. So I want to ask, because we have not, as a board, all of us face-to-face sat down and said to each other, what can we remove from this budget? It's, you know, so that we don't have to raise taxes? That's my question.
So, I thank you, Ms. Byrne, for your comments. Does anybody have any other comments? Ms. Byrne brought up a point, asking if there was anything within the budget that anyone was comfortable removing. I don't like to use the word "cutting" in the budget. Removing, reallocating. Does anybody have any comments?
Please.
I have some comments in general. First of all, Mr. Salantano, I understand that 10 years ago, we got away with fewer, whatever. The fact is, is our student body is very different than it was 10 years ago, number one. Number two, we're putting vice principals in buildings where there are 500 elementary school children. I don't think that there has been a building at the elementary level in this district that has had that large of a population. And you're talking about, you know, maybe Dr. Rocco needs to explain what
In Hamilton Township, with three kids that go to these schools, and I understand that, and I'm glad you brought it up, and I appreciate that you brought it up because I think we should have a conversation about it. But what I would say is this, if we're looking to find a place to cut money from the budget, cut it from the charter school. Cut it from the charter school that's taking $5.1 million worth of our money. Then we can talk about no tax increase, right? Because that's $5.1 million that we're not putting into something here in this district. Whether that's a new teacher, whether that's a repair to a building, whether that's an addition, whether that's a new textbook, then we can talk. But, but what we need to do as a district is move forward. There is a lot of work that needs to be done here. There are a lot of big moves that need to be done here to make sure that our students are competitive with other students around the county and the state. And that's what's most important here. We have been talking about this budget since December. We've brought it up multiple times in meetings. We've had conversations. So none of this has been created in a bubble. Yes, the conversation about two VPs came up last week, but it was based on, what is the rationale for why we're doing one? And in reality, I wanted to recommend two, but was concerned that that might not be palatable based on not having any at this time. But we need them. We need the three teachers that are interventionists. We need the new ELL teachers. We need the new bus driver. Those are all the things that are driving our district to try and make change, to try to address the three goals, to try to do better by our students and our community. And ultimately, if our concern is the cost, as our schools get better, the value of our property will get better.
And I just want to, since I started this, this thread, let's think about where our buildings were when we didn't raise taxes, when we didn't put money into our facilities. Because a lot of what we've been doing in the last seven years has been playing catch-up. And you know that as well as I do, Mr. Salantano, because we've been on the board for a long time. Not only that, when you have vice principals, if you have a principal that's out, you can move that vice principal into a building to cover for the day. So, you know, it's, I understand what you're saying, but I also think we have to remember where we've been and where we are now. And we did have a conversation about a new school on the Crockett property, if you remember. It went up for a referendum, and because the referendum was so poorly organized, because it was an all-or-nothing referendum, because the way that they figured the money for that, they didn't include desks and books and salaries and anything, and the community voted it down. So we did have a conversation.
I remember that vividly because you're exactly right. The issue there was, yeah, there was a price for the building, but they conveniently forget the necessities, the chairs, the tables, the, you know, the books and pencils.
I was there at that meeting.
Right, okay, I remember that.
I'm sorry, Mr. Salantano, did you want to continue? I apologize.
I just, yeah, I just want to, you know, follow up with something here. So, I think Stacy just mentioned something about, you know, not being aware, or trying to reduce some items. The problem I'm having this year, the last year, the year before, and even before that, five, six years, is we don't do the budget like we used to. You had a calendar up there tonight. You started the budget in December. Who started the budget in December, okay? The administration started the budget in December. If we would have a collective meeting with the entire Board of Education discussing these things, like, Megan may have, I'm not picking on you, but I'm using you as an example. Megan, at her school, maybe they need a new roof that hasn't been addressed, and she, and she brings it to the table, okay? The board discussed, used to discuss this thing, these things. Now we have three committees, okay? Each doing their own thing and trying to coalesce them together at the, at the end and tell me that I know everything that's going on. I don't know everything that's going on. It was, it was, I think, more feasible, doable, and whatever. When we would address each department, each school, and ask them, point blank, what is it that you need at your school? What is it that you can't live without? And we did the same thing with the Board of Education. What is it, I'll use you, Mrs. Ferrara, what is it, Ms. Ferrara, that you think the board needs, or what do you think that the board can do without? That, to me, was a, that was a budget process, okay? And that's probably what I'm, I'm a little under the weather about now, the budget process. I'm not saying there's anything wrong with what was done, it's just that I need to have a complete picture of how it was done, what was asked, you know, the follow-up questions, and I think I can handle it from there. But right now, I have a ton of questions on items because, like you said, yeah, we've been talking about it, but we haven't been talking about it in a, in a general sense where everybody was there and knew what the heck I was talking about, what they were talking about, what you were talking about, and what maybe the audience thinks. And I, I think that was more on a level playing field than I see now. An example, you want to talk about the vice principals? All of a sudden, in the last few years, or maybe the last month, I don't, I'm not, I don't mean to point fingers at anybody, but I've noticed the other thing. We have more assistant directors than I've ever seen in my life. For what, okay? Assistant director for this, assistant director for that. Plus, they've already had some of these departments that are asking for extra help, help. So what are we trying to do? We're trying to build up a West Windsor here, or a Princeton? We're not West Windsor, we're not Princeton, okay? We're Hamilton Township. And if you remember, I don't know if anybody remembers, I remember one time people would come to the board, and they did it in California. And I said, then go back to California. This is not California. But that's, that needs to be done. I need to know what's on everybody's mind and why they're supporting things.
And I appreciate your comments, Mr. Salantano. And perhaps, moving forward, you know, the next budget cycle, perhaps we could take a look at that and add some of your comments, and basically take a look to see more input. But I do know, and I can, I'm only going to speak for myself, that if I do have a question in regards to the budget, we've had, I think, three or four now budget presentations, and we have had the opportunity for the public to be here to hear the budget presentation and ask the questions. So, we do have the opportunity to ask them. I do understand, because I was here at that time too, where it was done a little bit differently. So I do understand that. And perhaps we take a look and see if we can make it more efficient or more inclusive. I do think that it was done quite professionally and well, so I will agree to disagree on certain things, but I do feel that we have had the opportunity over the last three months to ask questions based on the information that we were given.
If, if I knew what was going on, yes, you're right, but I'll, let me just say this. In November, the budget process should start, okay? Then, you trade, you trade this for that, you come up with the numbers, whatever. And then, January, February, the administration puts something together for the Board of Education. So we get three months to look at it, February, March, and April, okay? And we did, don't get me wrong, we did, but not in the manner that I'm speaking of.
And I appreciate your comments.
I want to end with that if nobody torments me.
Okay, that's okay. I believe Mr. Kenka had some questions.
Just a comment, a comment and a follow-up on some of the conversation that's been going on. I appreciate the $1 million in the budget for added security. I came forward and, and brought some issues that I thought should have been addressed that I had seen while driving around the district with the door safety and stuff like that. And I'm glad to see that we're going to be moving forward. I want to thank Dr. Altobello and Jim O'Boyle for going around the district and identifying all the places that can be breached without us even knowing it. So we're going to, we're going, we're looking into making these, all these doors secure, and I appreciate the funds for that. As you all know, since the referendum, we've poured in a lot of money into security. And we had to pour into a lot of money into security because times have changed. You see what goes on around this country, and we just couldn't sit back and not have secured classrooms, secured entryways into the facility. We also had to go, we had to move on to the, the security, the system with, you know, the, going through the metal detectors and stuff like that. All this stuff costs a lot of money. And I'm, I'm going to put a guess here, in the last, probably in the last three years, we probably dumped over 20 to 25 million dollars into securing these facilities for the children of Hamilton Township. We just couldn't sit back and allow that to, to be, to go unaddressed. And I've been on this board a long time, and when I first got on the board, facilities suffered tremendous, tremendous decay. We had, all of our roofs in our building had zero warranties on them. That's not the case anymore. We've addressed that issue. We've dumped millions of dollars into these roofs to make sure that kids didn't have to sit at the desk with a bucket next to them. We've, we had boilers in this district that were 50 years old, very inefficient. We had steam systems in this district that were not maintained because there was no money to put into the maintenance of these buildings. If you, if anybody remembers here that's been in this township long enough, I used to ride by the schools in the, in the wintertime, and the windows were wide open because they were on runaway heat. We dumped millions of dollars into upgrading control systems in this building, and we've tried to eliminate the majority of the steam systems in this building and move on to hot water, which is a little bit more cost-effective to the district. We've changed hundreds of boilers here from a 50-year-old boiler to something that's state-of-the-art, which monitors its output with the outdoor temperature. Before, you would, we'd run these boilers up to 180, 200, 180 to 200 degrees, and it was 56 degrees outside. That's no longer the case anymore. As the, as the temperature goes up, the boiler maintains a lower temperature. As it goes down, the temperature is proportionate, it rises up. All this stuff costs a lot of money. And we're, and we still work every single day with, with the, Mrs. Atwood, the business administrator. I'm trying to pry money out of her all the time because we had a, literally a decade, maybe two decades, where we dumped no money into our facilities. And like, I don't remember who said it, but we had to pay catch-up. And to play catch-up, it costs a lot of money. And we're to the point now where we're almost maintaining what we have right now because we spend so much money. But like, like you say, roofs cost money. We're, we're looking to do the roofs at the three high schools, and the, and the price tag is, is around $18 million. I mean, you have to have a roof on a building for these kids to be safe. And, because the, the one thing you don't want to have is what happened in the Trenton School District with Trenton Central High School, where they did nothing to the building, and it was so bad, they couldn't repair it, they had to tear it down. So do we want to spend $250 million on a new school? No. We'll spend $20 million to try to keep our schools maintained. So, if you want to try to cut the budget, you, we did it, they did it in the 90s and the early 2000s, and we ended up paying for it from 2009, when I got on, up until now, we're still trying to catch up a little bit here. But like I say, we're, we're, we're at, to a point now where we can not relax, but we can say, I'm not going to get a phone call tonight that the roof caved in over at Yardville Heights or something like that because the rain was leaking through. So, and like I say, every day, we, the facilities department finds things around the district that are so antiquated that you can't get parts for, and that we're, we're upgrading everything. Are we doing everything in one year? No, it's, it's, it's No, it's, 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 it's a project that takes many, many years, but we're not letting nothing fall behind anymore. And I'm trying to keep on top of everything with the business office and with our facilities committee. And, you know, we're just, we're working on it. We're, we're finding creative ways to cut funding. We went, like, Dr. Rocco brought up, we had, when I first got on here, we had, we had IT equipment that was 10, 12, 13 years old. Now we go into a lease, we go into a leasing program because of Mrs. Atwood. And now we, we have equipment that's one, two years old to keep the kids up to date where they can learn at the pace that the rest of society is. And I want to go back on a comment that Mr. Salantano, or somebody brought up, and Mr. Salantano said, I looked up the assessment values of the homes in West Windsor, Hopewell, and in Princeton. And the assessment, average assessment in Hopewell was $495,000. West Windsor, $538,000. Princeton, $848,000. That's what the assessment values are, the average assessment values on, in those towns. Hamilton Township, $216,000. Are there houses here that are worth more? Yes. But there are a lot of houses that are worth a lot less. So, you know, you can't make a comparison between Hamilton Township and those other, those other communities. They're paying a lot more money, that's why they have new buildings. And we could do the same thing here. But who wants to pay more in taxes? Who wants their tax rate to go up? You know, you're paying $10,000 a year. Do you want to pay $15,000 a year? No, I don't either. But we, we work with what we have. And we're trying to, like I said, we're trying to play catch-up. So, and I make sure that the, the facilities budget doesn't get cut because if we maintain, we will get more time out of these, this equipment at a more efficient rate. So, but I want to thank everybody for the, I want to thank you for the million bucks.
Thank you, Mr. Kanka. Dr. McSheen?
Yeah, I mean, I feel like I have a lot of comments. And I do appreciate the discussion that everyone's having here. First, I, I feel like this would be a great discussion when the budget's first brought up. I think we would just have more time to think about it and decide and, you know, help Dr. Rocco and the administration flesh it out a bit more. So hopefully, next time, we're able to bring important questions up early. I, I mean, I think it is a good question, Ms. Byrne, about what can be cut or, or, you know, however this budget can be done creatively. That said, you know, it's often said that budgets are moral documents, right? It's kind of showing where we're trying to really put first, what we're trying to put first. And I think, as board members, we should all be here for the students first. And if there were specific items that you couldn't trace back to the welfare and the progress of a student, that would be an easy thing for us to decide to cut. That said, I don't feel like, in anything I've heard, that there's anything very clearly that we could say, oh, that makes no sense for the health and welfare and progress of the student. You know, even when we're talking about vice principals, right? There's the direct impact for the students, right? It's, it helps stabilize a school that's especially, you know, if a school in our district is usually 300 students or so, and there's one principal, if you nearly double that and there's still one principal, it's practically just less face time with the students, right? Less interactions, fewer interactions, decreased quality of time. And that's nothing to say about the impact on the staff and how, we've also discussed many times that retention and recruitment is challenging for everyone. It's challenging in this district. Being able to fund our schools properly with, you know, staff and the equipment, materials, facilities, everything is important. And if you could point to anything that would say, you know, if we cut it, it wouldn't impact the students or make it better, you know, I would love to hear that. And I think that'd be important to hear. That said, I don't think I've heard anything directly that, that's mentioned, been mentioned. Dr. Rocco, can you remind us how many years we've gone without increasing the tax in this last few years?
I would have to ask Mrs. Atwood on that.
Talking about the rate. I have to go back. I know we went through a couple of years where we kept it flat. I think last year, the average increase, I guess, was $11. Oops. Go back.
I feel like in my recollection, from 2020 until last year, there wasn't an increase.
It was, I'll say again, I'm sorry.
In my recollection, from 2020 till last year, there was not an increase.
Zero. In '22, '23, there was nothing. Last year, in the current year budget, it was $11. Increase in the previous year, it was two years ago, we didn't go up at all.
Right. I think.
And the tax rate.
Yeah. And so I, I've probably moved here, I think, I've been in the town the shortest amount of time than has anyone else here. So when we're looking for a home, it was important to look at the schools and, you know, obviously, you look at taxes and values and everything. And I, I understand the point that the other towns do have, you know, increased taxes, but also the socioeconomics are different. And that's obviously true. But I don't think fully funding or really making progress on our district means that we're becoming West Windsor, we're becoming Princeton. I think it's a bad way to think, honestly, if we say, just because we're hiring more teachers or improving our facilities or, you know, making room for a new facility, if that could ever happen, I'm not sure. But I, I think it's wrong to say that we're becoming not Hamilton because of that fact. And so I, I just want to remind us that, you know, we're here for the students. And honestly, again, if anyone has something that they would, you know, suggest cutting that doesn't impact the students directly, please bring it up because that's totally important. I think that's worth a discussion for sure. But so far, what I've heard in the budget, I'm, I'm fine with it.
So, Dr. McSheen, just to remind everyone, we did have the discussion about the second vice principal. And it was at my recommendation that we add the second one instead of having the split. And I was fully prepared to vote to increase the amount even more. And Dr. Rocco and his team went back and looked at the numbers and did say, you know what, we can postpone some improvements in this area to another year so we can keep the budget flat. So just a reminder, I mean, there was thought, a thought process that went into how we can make this work. So we really don't impact the taxes more than we have to. All right?
Yes, thank you. I just have a concern at one of the comments that we're not Princeton, we're not Lawrence. Our students still deserve a quality education. And there are drivers that Dr. Rocco went into, the transportation costs. There's, those costs are just up across the state, and we have to find a way to finance them. And there are, like, I will join in, in Mr. Kanka rather than repeating what he said, but we need our facilities to be brought up to date and maintained up to date for the benefit of our students. Dr. Rocco mentioned the charter schools and the $5 million that has to come from our budget for them. But let's not forget, we need, as a board, to make sure that our schools are competitive so that our students are wanted to come here and not go to the charter schools. And we can only do that by funding our programs. I think it's very late to now be bringing up that we should be looking at cutting this budget when we've had it for three months. Nothing was ever said that there was any opposition to the raise. The raise has been proposed from the beginning. It was mentioned in committee. And so I think that to now say on the night that we're going to approve it that we should be suddenly looking at every line item to see what we can cut, that's not fair to our students that you're going to vote down the budget for that reason. It's not fair to cut things because our students deserve a quality education. And I think that we need to keep our schools competitive so that we can compete with the surrounding towns and compete with the charter schools so that we have a quality education for all of our students. Thank you.
Dr. Ferrara?
I just want to follow up on Mr. Salantano's concern with directors. And I'm going to tell you a story.
With what, I'm sorry.
Directors, that there were too many directors. When I sat on the school board in New York State, we had just, the district had just added an assistant superintendent. And it was a very good thing because the day before school opened, the superintendent fell off a roof and went to the hospital and was in the hospital for a while. And had we not had an assistant, don't go on the roof. Don't go on the roof. If we had not had an assistant superintendent, we would have been in big trouble. Now, we need, the directors that we're putting in, for example, the change in facilities, making it a director, that director has to have certifications for the pools, for the black seals, all of those things. So if the director, God forbid, is out for a month, how do you find somebody to replace that person? And why not home grow? Not that we're going to say, hey, because you've been assistant director, you get to be director. But at least have somebody in the position, if we don't want to move that person up, who can hold the position together until we hire somebody. It's just foolish not to have assistant directors.
I understand what you're saying. But the fact of the matter is that, over in facilities, you do have a number of people who hold a lot of those certificates that are presently being held by the number two first person, I won't mention the name, okay? In the, in the warehouse, for example, they've always had somebody there that had OSHA training. They always had somebody over there who could talk about the pools because we had problems with the pools at one time. And that's where our information would come from and our recommendations. And they also have to be smart enough to know who they can go to if they don't have an answer. That's why they have consultants out there. That's why they have the folks out there that are experts in what they do. And to engage them and pay them for a day, a month, or even a couple of months is a lot different than paying somebody for a full year that you really don't need to have, in my opinion, right now because of the bare fact that it, it's just an overkill. These are all overkills, all right? Example, I'll give you an example. You want to talk about this, this school district, what we need to do? So I did this, just in certified staff alone.
Can you speak into the mic so we can understand you?
I said, just in certified staff alone, since June, July of 2021, until this past January, this school district lost 599 certified folks. 332, give or take one, certified staff and non-certified staff, 267. That's 599 folks we have lost. In the meantime, there was 180, 284 resignations, and the retirements came to about 100, all right? Now, why is that important? Because we're putting all these extra people on, but yet we've lost, we're not replacing them one for one. I'm sorry, did I say, the appointments were 599. I'm sorry, the appointments were 599. Versus the resignations, the resignations were 284, and the appointments were 599. That's better than two to one, okay?
Wait, I'm not following you. Hold on one second, everyone.
Let me, let me clarify, that's it. That's an inaccurate comparison, we're not hiring two for one. So the only growth that has happened in this district is what has been approved at this table for these budgets. So that's the growth that we have addressed. What we have is, we have a number of unfilled positions over a period of time that are being filled over time. And we've addressed a number of the reasons why we have had staff leave the district, why staff have retired. And that is also one of the purposes of negotiations with our bargaining units to determine how we can create a better contract for people so they are attracted to come here. But we are not, and I want to clarify because it's very important that the public understands this, we are not hiring two-for-one unbudgeted positions.
No, but these are all from our, our board reports. These are all from our board reports, these numbers. I, like I say, give, give me 10%, I'm, I'm off 10%. It's still a big number, okay? And Christine hit it on the head. We need to think about the youngsters in this school district. And don't, don't misunderstand what I said before. I was using West Windsor and Princeton as a comparison for tax purposes, which Mr. Kanka addressed, okay? He's got nothing to do with anything else other than a comparison. And that doesn't mean I'm going to sit here and, and do anything less for our youngsters here. They need to be our priority. And the folks who are the priority in this district, okay? We hire them because we know their, their experience, they have their recommendations, they have all the goodies. And they need to be able to step up when something needs to be done that we are always making rules and regulations for. And I understand, it's a different time. 20 years ago, some of the things that are going on today in our classrooms, they laugh at. Today, it's, it's a lawsuit waiting to happen. But we need to take care of the, of the bread and butter, and that's your classroom teachers. And getting back to the principals, doing this, that, and the other, I don't, I don't doubt they, they're worth their weight in gold, believe me. But at an elementary school, I don't understand what a principal would be doing in a classroom day in and day out, other than, I mean, they do cheer up the youngster, I understand. And sometimes they may step in and try to give a lesson or give a lesson. I understand that. But that's not their primary job. Their primary job there is make sure that school is run within the regulations of this Board of Education through the administration and handle all of the, I have to say it this way, the complaints that come in. And there's probably a complaint a minute. But we need to, we need to do a better job overall if you want to keep out charter schools, et cetera, et cetera. Okay, because to me, 20 years ago, if you asked me about charter schools, I would have told you no way. You're asking me today? The only blessing I can see coming out of a charter school today is that it should make us a better school district, okay? And prove to everybody that this is where they belong and not there. And until we do that, I, I don't know what's going to happen next.
Ms. Byrne?
Excuse me. Well, with all due respect, when I ask what it is we can cut, you know, and the response is the charter school, we as a board here in Hamilton, we don't get a vote on that, correct? That's something that the Department of Education decided. So that's not something that we can actually sit here and talk about or cut. Is that correct?
It's correct, but it would have the least impact on kids here in Hamilton.
Right. I understand that, but that's not something that we are going to actually sit here and negotiate because we don't make that decision. Also, I feel, and I, I hope that some of my colleagues agree, we have a responsibility to the students, but we also have a responsibility to the constituents that, who voted for us. And I think that includes the tax rate. Hearing from constituents that they're struggling places a responsibility, I feel, on us to take that into consideration. This is, and I'm sorry if people think it's unfair to say what we can do last minute, but tonight is the vote, so I think that it's all fair to ask the question. I mean, if you want to go line item by line item, I have some things on here that I could say, what is this 2-point-something million? What is this 1-point-something million? But I don't feel we, as a board, have ever had this conversation, honestly, to say, what is it that we can detract from this budget? And when we said, when you said that we can, that, that conversation last month was so that we can bring it to, to a zero tax rate, I don't think we've ever talked about how we can get this to a zero flat tax. It was just to reduce it so that we weren't adding to what we already, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Right, yeah. I don't think we've ever had that conversation. And I wish that we would because I think that people are really struggling to pay their bills. Most people aren't making a quarter million dollars. So, you know, they're, they're struggling to live, to live in New Jersey, and they're going to leave New Jersey. So we're not even going to have that, you know, possibility for some of the, a lot of people are going to leave because of our taxes. And, and, and that was in a recent article. So it's not me just saying it, it's what our constituents here in New Jersey are feeling. And I think we just need to take that into consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Byrne. So I do want to continue hearing from what the board comments, but I do want to give the public the opportunity to come in, up and ask questions. the public the opportunity to come up and ask questions on the budget. So if I can reserve the right to ask board members after we hear questions and comments from the public, okay? So at this time, if there's anyone from the public that would like to come up and have any questions in regards to the budget, I ask you to please come up at one, one at a time. And when you come up, just please state your name.
My name is John Mucum, resident of Hamilton Township. I'm a 1971 graduate of McCarson High School, St. Anthony's High School at the time. So listening to Dr. Rocco's presentation from last month's meeting and also various comments tonight, I'm assuming that the charter school we're talking about here is at the McCarson location, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
All right, so I ran some basic numbers here, and I apologize for the simplicity of this because it's really only supposed to be a conversation starter. So we take our proposed budget, $286 million. And I just want to thank all of you, you're all good people, and there's probably 286 million questions to ask about such a big budget. This is a huge undertaking. And, you know, the board members are doing this without pay, and the members of the administration are probably not getting paid enough to manage such a huge thing. But just taking this as an example, 286 million dollars, and you're projecting 12,854 students, combining regular students and charter students. So the spending per student overall is about $22,280. So assuming that's correct, you have 246 additional charter students that are going to go to this charter school. At $22,280 apiece, that's $5,480,000. That's how much it would cost to educate 246 students in our regular schools. So when they ask for $5,186,000, it sounds like that's a bargain. And from what you're saying, it's a better education anyway. So that is one thing that occurs to me. But you're also talking about these incredible increases in enrollment. I know that school, that school can hold 1,200 students. So rather than brushing it aside or feeling bad about it, we may need to do more with that because we have so many students coming into the district. So those are just some comments I have, I don't know whether it makes any sense, there's probably a lot of fine points to it, but we should give it some thought.
Thank you. Do I have, please. So this is just for the budget questions. We will have two other hearings of the public on school-related matters and agenda items, but this is actually a separate, we're inviting the public to come up and ask questions because it's a public hearing on the budget.
I just wanted to, Rose Greagel, Hamilton resident, the 217,000, what was that for? That was, that was.
Average assessment. Oh, that's the average assessed home in Hamilton Township. That is provided by the township.
And I haven't really looked over the budget, I saw, you know, the budget. Does that include increase in teacher salaries?
So we are currently in negotiations with the Teachers Association for a contract that expires at the end of June.
Okay, so they're looking to.
So we have to budget for increases, but we don't know what that increase will be based on the settlement agreement.
Okay, and also, it was said something about healthcare, or for the teachers, the insurance for the teachers, because, am I correct that they don't get health insurance until they've been employed for three years?
So a settlement agreement many years ago, probably going back 15, 20 years ago, it was a negotiated agreement where a new employee would not receive family health benefits until year four, is it? In year four. So that was what the agreement was.
And is that part of the budget to maybe push that up a little?
That is an item that can be part of negotiations, and since we're in the middle of negotiations, I can't actually talk about it.
Oh, okay. Also, air conditioning, just, is that also being discussed?
So air conditioning, we have air-conditioned the cafeterias in the high schools, we have additional air conditioning going into several other locations as we do this. It is a step-by-step process because it's a multi-tiered issue on air conditioning. One is the electrical systems in our schools cannot handle air conditioning, they cannot handle window units, except for some window units that they have. And then the other thing is, years ago, the original estimate, I think probably 10, 12 years ago, was somewhere 60, 70 million dollars to air cond, even higher than that. So it's probably close to 150, 200 million now.
It was about 225.
Oh, 225 million.
That was inclusive of structural work that had to be done, plus electrical upgrades.
Electrical upgrades, so that's what the cost was.
225 million.
Okay, and in my remaining time, I had heard one of your other budget presentations last year. You bring up the formula that is often used.
Yes.
But never real, I don't understand what that is, it's never really been explained, like.
State aid formula?
Yeah.
It's never been explained to us either.
What's that?
It's never been explained to us either.
That's what I'm confused about, this formula.
So there's a formula, it's actually, I think.
Is it different from last year?
So, I mean, and I'm going to defer to Ms. Atwood, the business administrator, to talk about that because she's definitely better at this than I am. I believe there's an article in NJ.com recently about this school funding formula, but it is a formula that takes into a number, account a number of variables to determine what state aid you are receiving, or in the chance you're what's called an S2 district, you lose state aid, which a number of districts lost state aid this year. So Ms. Atwood, can you just explain for a second?
That's my last question, also.
The formulas.
Okay, so the funding formula hasn't changed over the years. What had happened when this new formula came in place, I believe it was probably around 2010, I think, if I've got that correct. The state then had all of its financial problems and didn't run it. In other words, I remember when Governor Christie, good timeframe, held the formula flat year after year. I think when Dr. Rocco showed that slide, showed how year after year, we were not given, nobody was given money. So what happened were districts like us, that would do a lot of money, we were actually growing at that time, did not get it. Those districts that declined in enrollment and didn't need to keep that level, kept getting it over and over and over. And about three years ago to four years ago, I believe it started with this current governor, maybe, I can't remember the previous one, started, they started to run it, couldn't afford to run it in full, so the legislature passed a law that would phase in full funding over several years. What that resulted in is districts like us, which was searching it, we weren't ever getting it. We have been able to benefit over each year and get more money. At this point, we are fully funded, but make it clear, fully funded doesn't mean fully paid, you know, for transportation, everything else, it's under the formula. But what other districts then experienced, those that had been receiving a lot more over the years, had to phase out what they were receiving, and that's what an S2 district, they had been unfortunately losing money, but it was to basically reach the constitution of an equitable funding formula, so everybody's receiving the equitable amount. So long story short, the formula hasn't changed. Only thing it changes is it's been fully funded now, and it does require updates in the cost factors that it uses to project how much money everybody gets. There's a report that gets issued, I think every three years, the legislature adopts it, so they inflate the per pupil amount that's allocated. But that's really the only changes there. Personally, I think there's a lot of opportunity for more changes. One area is actually transportation, for the mere fact, we get 25 cents for every dollar we spend, and for a district like us, it's inequitable because we're so large and we require so much commuting versus the little city district that doesn't need it. They're not hurt as much as the bigger districts that we are, and it is, and it's not part of that adequacy budget that you hear about, it's separate. So we have to use our tax levy to make up just the difference in transportation where other districts don't. I will get off my stage on that piece. But there were obviously opportunities to improve it, but they are running it now, it is fully funded, we benefited because we were so grossly underfunded all those years.
Thank you, Ms. Atwood. Would you like to, please just state your name?
Joe Marchika. Just want to know, I think this year is probably the first year that that funding formula that came from the state Supreme Court has ever been funded, if I understand correctly, in the history of the state. So it's good to see that there's something positive happening there because it was a lot of dark days under Christie, from what I understand. In any case, I wanted to ask, you brought up the charter school, just to make it clear for anybody here who is listening, we're talking about the McCarson Charter School application that would replace Trenton Catholic Preparatory Academy, it would no longer be TCA, it would no longer be allowed to be Catholic under law, it would need to be secular, and it projected to pull about $5 million or more out of Hamilton's district and out of Trenton's district as well for what it's worth. And that's to send kids to an unaccountable, privately-run, publicly-funded charter school that gets our tax dollars, but we have no say in how it's run, there's no oversight. It's well documented that the Department of Education's oversight is notoriously lax and is non-transparent, it's completely opaque, it's a black box. No one really knows how this works, right? It's just one point of approval. However, I've been told that there is an appeals process that can happen when a charter school is approved, and I wanted to ask if the intent, Dr. Rocco and the board backing you up, I would hope, you guys have been good on this, you've been out opposing this, asking questions, if a little too quietly for my liking personally, the taxpayer, because we heard about this very late, this hasn't been out in public, this hasn't been out in the press or anything. So I have two questions. First off, do you plan to appeal this? And second off, why has it taken so long for this to get out into the public and out into the press when, you know, you're the face of the district, Dr. Rocco? That's kind of your role.
Yeah, I've talked about the charter school for many years. If you come to any of my budget presentations, I talk about it. I did mention it, I believe, in our March board meeting, and I may have even mentioned it in the February board meeting. Also, it's public knowledge, I've written letters to the interim commissioner of education, the now commissioner of education, and to elected officials with eight points of opposition to the charter school because it is presented, it's not supposed to be secular, it's presented as secular, proximity to other charter schools, a whole series of other reasons why it should not be authorized at this point. Kind of believing that if those reasons were backed by statute and law, that the DOE would look at that and make a fair assessment. Unfortunately, on Friday at 3:30 last week, I received notification that they were approved. The board will have to make a decision on what the next steps are. I believe we will be talking about that possibly as early as tonight in closed session.
And I do want to thank you, like, our group, the only, that we were even aware that this was happening was because of those budget presentations, and was because you did provide some forum for this to get out into the public, so we want to thank you for that. I just do wonder why there weren't, you know, press releases going out, why this wasn't even more public facing, considering that the history of charter schools in New Jersey, that when communities have been able to shoot them down, and rightfully so, and to avoid them coming in and stealing public tax dollars for private education, unaccountable education, it's been on the back of public pressure. It's been on the back of communities standing up together as a collective, as a broad group, and making it clear that we support public education, that's a collective good for all of us, and not, you know, cherry-picking students and sending back the ones who don't do well and we're going to cost too much money, and in the process wrecking public education. So I just wonder why it wasn't more out in the public, why more effort wasn't made to make the public aware that this was happening.
Other than what I've put out, I don't have a response that I could provide to you.
And that's all good, and we do appreciate what you have done, and this is not coming from a place of trying to go after you, this is coming out of a place of genuinely wondering what's going on here.
No, I don't say it that way, but I don't have a response other than when we put it out.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, good evening, Lisa Lankowski, administrator for HTCSE. I have more of a statement than I do a question, if that's okay, about the budget. Thank you for the budget presentation. History has shown that we did not always do the right thing funding our district for the past several decades, and it got us into the mess that we have been facing for more than 15 years. $5.90 per month is well worth the expense to keep us moving forward as a district. We are appreciative of the district transparency and the fact that you have presented this information numerous times for the public and to be aware of what is happening. We are at a serious inflection point with regard to our facilities, but we are years away from building anything new, even if we said, right now, let's make it happen. So it's imperative that we do everything to keep our schools in the best shape possible. Thank you for doing the very best for our HTSD community facing rising costs, increased enrollment, and various challenges. No one is mistaking us for the blue ribbon school districts that surround our community, but that doesn't mean that we should fall further and further behind and hurt our student population in the process. As an aside, for the public that's always yelling about transparency, charter schools will not hold public budget hearings like we're having here this evening and the past several ones that you've had. We as taxpayers will be completely closed off from that process, and that's yet another reason to oppose another charter school coming into our district. Thank you once again.
Good evening, Joanne Bruno. I just have a couple of questions, and I want to thank Lisa and Joe before me. I agree with what they've said. The questions that I have, Dr. Rocco, do charter schools in Hamilton Township, or anywhere actually, do they have the same obligations to their students as far as meeting state standards, curriculum standards, and testing?
My understanding is that they are obligated for the curriculum? I do not know, and I'm looking for Mr. Scotto, I can't see him here, but are they obligated to take the state testing that we take?
They are. They're subject to review, I believe, every two to three years based on the performance of the school and meeting targets, and that determines if a charter is renewed, non-renewed, or placed on conditional approval. But they are responsible for the New Jersey student learning standards as well as the state assessments.
Does that hold true for all of the private schools, the charter schools, and for homeschooling?
It does not apply to private schools because they may be under a different direction, such as the diocese of Trenton, the diocese of Matutchen, or a private school may just have its own Board of Trustees. Homeschooling, once a parent chooses to homeschool, they are then responsible for the teaching and the implementation. Some families will align their homeschool instruction to the state's standards, but it is not required in the state.
Thank you. Okay, and my other question, Dr. Rocco, was on the busing that you referenced. You said that 25 cents on the dollar is what we're reimbursed for. The 75 cents that is remaining, does that come out of the $5 million that we're?
No, that comes out of our budget, correct?
That comes out of this, what?
Our transportation budget.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, that comes out of our transportation budget, that is not part of the charter school, correct, Ms. Atwood?
Right, we, for charter schools, we have to bus them and we have to pay for it. So I think what you're saying, if we don't get the state aid, we're only getting state aid for 25 cents on every dollar we spend, that means our tax levy is raising the difference.
And so does that include sports as well? Transportation, two sporting events?
Yes.
Any transportation cost, yes.
Okay, how nice.
Please state your name.
Geraldine McSorley from Hamilton, longtime resident. So I keep hearing about the increased enrollment in the schools. So I'm just wondering, has there been an increase in birth rate? Are these families moving to this area?
So there is hard data numbers and there is observational numbers, so I'll go with the hard data numbers. We've had. We've had a demographic study that again shows that we are growing as a community. The last demographic study, we grew faster than what the demographer said we would, and we look like we're probably doing the same thing now, but both project, the last one projected we were going to decrease. This one projects we are going to grow, right? So there is, with birth rate, an increase. Then anecdotally, in my neighborhood where I live in Hamilton Township, a lot of the original homeowners are selling their homes, and they are selling to young families. And so probably, probably in the last four or five years, you see more parents with young children in my neighborhood walking around. And that's just anecdotally, as I've seen homes go up for sale.
So are you seeing an increase in kindergarten, first grade, second grade, or families starting at the bottom and, you know, graduating through? Or are these families just coming in, people moving, new jobs, that kind of thing?
It's all over the place. I think we get a slight decrease in middle school, but elementary and high school, I believe, we do get the majority of our growth.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Jessica Trombino, I live in Yardville. I just was wondering, I was hearing Tony Santano say about people that have, the amount of people that have retired and have left the school district as teachers or staff. And I'm wondering, have you hired in replacement of them as much as we have lost?
We continue to hire when somebody retires or resigns. Our intention is to fill that teaching position. We have been successful in the majority of those bills. However, like most districts across the country, there are not enough teachers to meet the demand. And that is because we are not producing as many education majors out of the colleges and universities and who do graduate. About 80% of them go into teaching. The other 20% who are certified teachers never go into the classroom. So there are less people coming out to fill the vacancies, but our attempt is to do that.
And you're saying that this budget is putting in negotiations to try to incentivize teachers to want to come to Hamilton District to be replacements for those that we have lost, which is why there's been such a serious decline in the Hamilton performance?
No, I'm saying our budget is addressing salary, potential salary increases. I can't go into detail because we are in the, literally in the middle of negotiations. We had a session this morning, this afternoon. So we budget for increases in salaries each year.
Okay, but so I hear a lot of, we're trying to catch up, we're trying to catch up. So does that mean that it's because we haven't replaced teachers that have the amount of staff and teachers that have left, and that's why our percentages are so low as far as Hamilton District? You know, only a third are actually meeting the criteria for this district? So I'm wondering if that has something to do with why our students are so low, why our school district is so low on the performance level? Is it because we have lost so many teachers and that we haven't replaced them?
Well, I don't know if that's one of the variables. It can be one of the variables. I think going back many years, not every student was tested here in the past years ago, and we're obligated by law to test our students no matter what their ability is. So that's part of this also. We're also coming out of the pandemic where the majority of districts saw learning loss, and we've been addressing that through various ways, tutoring, before-school, after-school, summer programming, and this MTSS system that we're using to address learning specific to the student.
And you believe that this budget with the increase in every aspect of this budget is going to raise the standard and raise our performance on our district?
That is one of our goals.
And you believe that that's, you believe that that will happen from raising this budget?
That's my hope it will.
Joanne Bruno. This is actually not related so much to the budget as is to the charter school. I have a question about that again.
Ms. Bruno, I'm sorry. So if it's more in a question of the charter school, it doesn't have to do with the budget, if you don't mind if we could...
Okay.
Put it on the agenda on school-related matters? Because this really is just for the budget. I'm sorry. Thank you.
I did sign up for the first speaking, but I think my question more has to do with the budget.
Budget, okay.
One of the things that I wanted to find out, one of the slides indicated that there were five different projects that were going to be paid for by the Capital Reserve. On the board packet for today, one of the resolutions lists three of those. So what I was wondering is whether or not that resolution is missing two of those items because the resolution indicates that there is going to be $2 million from the Reserve to pay for these items in the resolution. But the presentation that was given had a McGalliard Boiler, and a Crockett Shop conversion. Both of those items weren't listed in the resolution, and I'm just wondering if that resolution needs to be adjusted because those two projects add about $3 million, excuse me, $1 million. So that resolution should indicate probably about $3 million coming out of the Reserve. And one of the other things I'm just going to throw there at this time, I think I'd like the board to be able to ask some questions about how much is going to be left in the Reserve after this $3 million comes out, and be more specific about where this money is going, to what schools, because one of the mentions in the resolution indicates multiple schools. And I think it would be nice to know exactly what schools we're talking about. Thank you.
Ms. Atwood?
So regarding the Capital Reserve projects, one of those projects was, it's all based on when we bid them. So the board's obligated to approve a bid. So one of those projects, the last month, we already approved, because we had already bid it, and the McGalliard Boilers, we have not bid yet, so it hasn't been awarded. So the motion's correct because it's the projects we have awarded between, we had bid, and we are recommending award now.
So the McGalliard will be on another resolution. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Risa, and I am a long-term citizen of Hamilton Square. I have two children that went through University Heights, Reynolds, and graduated from Steiner proudly. So I'm really invested in this community. I have some, I have a statement, and then I have some questions about the budget. I fully agree that maintaining our buildings and ensuring that they're structurally sound and safe is very important, and we should continue to invest in that. Where my concern is, is investing in administration that would be in case something happens. I don't think that's where we should be looking to put our assets or our budget towards. We should be staffing to make sure that our students have great teachers that can step in if there are what-ifs and things that happen, because we all know in life, things happen. And we should also be making sure that our students are safe in our community. It's important that they know when they come to school that they are safe, they have great teachers. They don't care how many administrators there are, how many directors there are, who's going to do this, who's going to do that. They just want to make sure that their day goes smoothly, and that should be the job of the school board and honestly, the Department of Education. I don't really know a lot about the charter school. To me, it's a little unsettling that there are people that obviously in this state, in this county, feel that the school district isn't providing what they need, that they're looking for a charter school, so maybe that's something that we should think about in the future. But my questions are, in some of the budgets, here are the things that I, and I wrote them down because I just didn't understand what they were. What is social thinking? What is district inflection? What are the mental health enhancements? Is there a list of the professional development seminars that the budget is paying for? These are the things that I was curious about.
Sure. Every month, we put on professional development programming for our staff and all, actually all year long, 12 months a year, everything from a new teacher induction program, which is for all four years that our teachers are non-tenured. If you're in your first year, you go to one extra session a month for all 10 months, and then nine times in your second year, eight times in the third year, and then seven times in your last year as a non-tenured staff. Those are 45-minute to one-hour sessions once a month. That's professional development training. Our tech department does multiple sessions a month on new tech tools, how to use tech in the classroom. You've got lessons on the different curriculum that we're using, the new textbooks that we're bringing in. So there's a plethora of different events that Mr. Scotto's department, Mr. O'Boyle's department puts on, and Ms. Audino's department puts on. And so there could be five to 10 to 15 sessions a month minimum, and then an entire summer program for our staff to take and train and learn as they go along. On top of that, we have a new teacher kind of welcome week, an induction week for our teachers, and we put a lot of training on for them. We also do training with our administrative staff. So July 9th, 10th, and 11th, all the administrators in the district have three full days of training, and then we'll have another additional day at the end of August. But for an example, in July, all of our administrators are going to be CPR certified, right? And so that comes at a cost to get Heart Saver certified or American Red Cross certified. I forget which one we're getting. But those type of trainings, emergency lockdown training. So we bring in people as they go forward. We've done a lot of work with social emotional learning and to help our students in different types of programs. Ms. Forlato, do you want to talk a little bit about some of the training that the guidance counselors have been doing this year that kind of relates to the items that you identified in the slides?
Sure. The first thing that we've done is we've added some skills for our elementary counselors to work with our students. So we had 10 counselors this year that went to SAMPLAY training so they can use those skills with the students within their buildings. We've worked, we're working currently on creating a more comprehensive curriculum using the American School Counseling Association standards to ensure that we're meeting the social emotional needs of all of our students in addition to academic and college and career. I'm also working closely with Ms. Audino. I'm bringing in SEL skills into the MTSS program that she'll be talking about next month to identify those areas in which students are struggling outside the academics, but obviously that impact the academics, so we can strengthen those skills and promote academic skills as well.
Okay. I think those are all great, but I do think that they should, and maybe I missed it, but I think it's important for the community to see what each of those are. There should be line items for them, what they are costing the district, and maybe those are things that we can look at, that maybe they don't have to be in the district all upfront. I know my time is up, and I appreciate all of your help. I know you all do this for free, and there's a lot of time, obviously. We're here, it's late. I do appreciate it, but I do think it is important to understand that Hamilton residents are suffering as well. And I think that if we're going to put money back into the school district, which I'm not opposed to, I think that we need to really understand exactly what it is and that we've looked to make sure that there is nothing that we can do to even just cut it a little. And I know "cut" sounds like a harsh word, but I think it's a bigger picture than just saying it's black and white.
Do I have any other members?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a point, Dr. Rocco. You didn't get a chance to answer one of her questions. If you could highlight the social thinking program, since that's a new special ed program in place?
Yeah, so the social thinking classroom, and I was just bringing up the information, it's a social emotional learning curriculum that we're going to be using. It's helping students with vocabulary and concepts, helping them to understand how to interact with each other. And I'm trying to, Kim, are there other details that I'm missing on this? It's not, you're not working with Marta on it? Okay.
I've talked to Marta a lot about it, if you just let me...
Yeah, go ahead.
One of the things about it that I really like is that it's for our students who don't necessarily fit into one of the categories of special ed programs we have now. So a student that might not get their needs met appropriately in a multiple disability room or in an autism room, this program in my eyes is really fantastic for our lower-needs autistic children that aren't prepared to be mainstreamed yet but don't have as high needs as maybe our autism program. So it's really good because it's teaching a lot of the social skills that they will need when they transition into secondary school. And I know at this point, we've just started the program at Sayon, but from what I've seen, it's doing really well, and I've heard great feedback from the parents, so.
Thank you, Ms. Atwood. Please just state your name again.
I will, Jo Marchika. And I also realize that I forgot to identify myself as with our Revolution Trenton Mercer. I'm in the leadership group, and I'm our acting chair of our Protecting Public Education Committee, so it's EYI, I'd be here at this meeting. And I wanted to note very briefly that we have been circulating a petition. It's gotten almost 800 signatures opposing that charter school. So I'm sharing this specifically to note before I ask my question, I do have a question, that if the district chooses to fight this thing, the community does have your back. And don't be afraid to go and do what you need to do to fight this thing because there are people in Hamilton who do not want to see this happen, who do not want to see a publicly funded, privately run, unaccountable charter school steal money away from our actual public schools. So that's the first thing, I just want to state that because I had forgotten to mention why we're here, we'll revout that we have this petition. But what I wanted to ask is, there was a lot of talk about ratables, right? And that seemed to be referring to the average tax levy on a property owner in Hamilton. When I've heard the word ratables used, it's often referred to things that affect the tax rate in a town outside of the actual property value. And I think that may have to do more with how state aid is given, but I'm unsure exactly how the different ratables in a town affect the property tax levy, right? Because you have things that the state will give you a tax break on as a town, right? You have a warehouse, you have affordable housing, you have different businesses and things that are taxed in different ways, and that lets a town like Hamilton where your property values are not as high still be able to tax a significant amount of money from other sources and not put too much on your property tax audit. Because we, very stupidly in New Jersey, we fund education through property tax, but that's just my opinion. So I wanted to ask, how, do you know, can you explain how that process works, how those other factors impact the tax levy outside of property values? Does that come through state aid? Does it impact things in other ways?
So it comes from the township, and I'll let Ms. Atwood discuss that.
Not exactly sure I understand your question, but ratables, there's a couple of things. Ratables is the denominator that we figure out what the rate is, right? So the tax levy is separate from the ratables. Tax levy is the revenue that we need to raise through taxes to balance our budget that we're capped at a certain percent. And then we calculate the rate by, based on the amount of ratables that we are allowed to, that the township's allowed to spread the raising of that tax levy, and that's how we come up with a rate. There are some ratables that, there are some properties, for instance, municipalities that don't get taxed and aren't part of our ratables, but that's called pilot projects. The township gets money a different way. That doesn't help the district because it's not part of the denominator in spreading out the levy and the rate. So that's one piece. When it comes to the state aid formula, yes, there's a whole different statewide ratable and then local district ratable that determines your wealth as to how much of your adequacy budget you will be funded in state aid called the state aid. So that, and so some districts also have been hurt if you're getting that state aid and why some people have lost districts. Hasn't been due to S2 or not being overfunded or underfunded. It has to do with their district got wealthier, their property wealth increased, their income increased relative to the rest of the state, and the formula will give you less money if you get wealthier as a district. You're going to get less money if you have less kids, and you're going to get less money if you become wealthier. And some districts have experienced both and have lost money. So that's another piece, but when it comes to our tax rate, it's the denominator in calculating how much the tax levy will, could be spread across the residents in the township.
I think that helps a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Jessica Trombino, Yardville. I just was wondering, so when I moved to Hamilton, something that was different from a different district was that Hamilton Township District budgets for sophomores and juniors to have driver's education and permit and... to have driver's education and permit and even get behind the wheel. And I was wondering, how do you budget that when not all sophomores and juniors can drive, like for whatever reason, some are handicapped or disabled or whatever the reason may be, maybe they don't want to drive? So where does the money go towards that program? Does it just go dispersed somewhere else? And why does Hamilton do that when so many other New Jersey districts don't do that? And so the taxpayers don't have to pay, and they can choose who they, you know, put their kids through driver's education and who they, you know, where they get their, because, you know, you can find a teacher much cheaper than probably what our taxes are paying towards a lump sum of driver's education for all, you know, sophomores and juniors. I'm just wondering how that works, and that's kind of like how I would like to understand how things are more itemized on the budget per say, per student, per school.
Well, it's not per student, per school. We budget line items for, say, the simulators. So every high school has simulators. We've also received grants to get simulators upgraded. We also have agreements with Mazda for the vehicles that we use. The teachers are paid a teacher salary to do that during the school day. There's a stipend if it's beyond the school day or during the summertime. It is a service that we provide the students of this community. It's a longstanding service. If you've had children come through the schools like we all have, they've all had the opportunity to learn how to drive in the simulator and then go out on the road. Some of us have had Mr. Capone teach all of our children on how to drive. So it is a service that we provide, and we budget for that annually. We budget for the car, the teacher, the insurance, the simulators, and those are inline items based on what those costs are.
Well, the budget for the cars and the simulators and everything that were granted to you guys?
We got a grant from NJM a couple of years ago to upgrade simulators. I'm not sure if that was in all the schools or was that just in one of the schools that needed it the most?
Over the years, I think we applied for the grants multiple years and we replaced them, but we don't pay for the simulators now because they're in place. We do rent the vehicles and we pay the teachers to teach them.
I remember in a different district, certain taxes went down when they took certain of those programs away. So I was wondering if you took something like that away and left it up to the parents to, if they decide to put their kids behind the wheel or simulate or whatever, would it drop our taxes a little bit? And would that be an idea that would, you know, like reverse it, like instead of something like that, take that kind of a budget away and put it towards, you know, the infrastructure and all the other things that you were thinking of?
I don't think you would see a significant change in the budget because the line items for the teachers to, stipends to run behind the wheel and the leasing of the vehicles are not at a level that would be noticeable in the budget or the tax line, I believe, if I'm doing the mental math very quickly.
I can't think if you budgeted, but it's not, I think every dollar counts, so I think we appreciate that. It's just when it comes to reducing tax levy, it's not that much. I think we pay for gas, we pay for leasing and teachers.
Yes, so we have to, because it's part of our curriculum, we budget for the annual payments, the lease payments for the cars so our students can drive. If you recall in our budget presentation last year, we needed to put some upgrades into the vehicles for the instructors to have a better brake in the case of an emergency. We budget for that. We budget for the gas. We budget for the insurance, and of course, we budget for the salaries connected to staff. One thing I'd like to point out to the board and to the community is this is a very safe, important service that we provide for our students here. And so while there may be schools, districts that don't have it, we do. And I think that that is part of educating the whole child and wanting to make sure that our kids are safe behind the wheel, making sure that our kids are safe in the classroom, making sure that our kids are safe on the field. So we're proud of our program. Does it cost money? Yes, everything costs money to educate our children. It would be my responsibility, along with the school business administrator and the superintendent of schools, to make sure we're not just putting a random number in the budget, but that we would get non-binding quotes from auto dealerships. We'd look at the cost of gas, the amount of hours that we spend on the budget to make sure that it's a proper number, not just a guesstimate, is something that we pride ourselves on. So then when we present it to the board and to the community, that it has the detail behind it, that we've looked and spoken with our vendors. Do we anticipate costs going up? Gas has gone up, so does that impact the budget? Yes. Do we try to shop around if we need to, to go with a different car dealer? If we need to, we do that. If we have a student have a little fender bender because they're learning to drive, we fix the car, just like if the desk was broken in the classroom, we would fix the desk. And so I see that it is part of the whole curriculum that we offer.
So I would like to thank everyone for your questions and your comments. We truly do appreciate your input, and we thank you for bringing ideas and issues to us. So thank you very much. And so at this time, I'm going to close the question, public question and answer for budget items, and I'm going to go back to our board and if there's any comments or questions. And then if not, we'll move item number four. Ms. Harvey?
Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, I would like to move the adoption of the budget for the 2024-2025 year.
Back in.
I had a question.
Do I have any questions?
Yeah. So we had someone ask if we can talk about the capital reserve. As a board member, I don't know what we have in our capital reserve. And also legally, is it possible to move some of the capital reserve over so that we are not raising taxes as much? Because it's not going to be the $6 a month for most of our residents in Hamilton.
So a couple of things. Over the years, we've been trying to grow capital reserve to address issues in our buildings and to prepare for upgrades, potential additions, or a new building if we need that. To kind of put it in perspective, I believe if there was a zero increase in the levy, that would still result in a $20.21 increase on the average taxpayer. So if there was 0% increase on the levy, which would be a little over a $4 million cut from this budget, the town would still be paying $20.21 on the average assessed $100,000 value on a house. So that's what that rate would be. To move money out of capital reserve, the legalities of that, Ms. Atwood?
You can only by law use capital reserve for capital projects. So you can't use that as a revenue source in the budget to offset tax levy. That's what, there's a capital reserve, and then there's another thing called maintenance reserve, which we also have, and we use for, but that again, only to be used for maintenance. And the difference between them would be maintenance is more if something broke, the boiler broke. Usually we can fund this within our budget, but if we couldn't, we could use maintenance reserve, we'd use maintenance reserve when we've had mold in some of our schools. We've been, capital is more. And I know in all of our discussions, we've been trying to build it because we know we have so many needs and we have the facility. But we do pull it out to do projects and the proposed ones.
I'd like to call the question.
Have a second. She just asked, do we have any other questions? Dr. McShane?
Sorry. Jumped in real quick. I didn't have a chance. And just to answer Ms. Burns' question, we do have the secretary report for the financials, and we do have listed there the capital reserve account report, which is at $14,999,330.63 and 16 cents. And I believe Ms. Atwood also pointed to the maintenance reserve account, which is at $762,654.28, at least according to this.
And that capital reserve amount also already includes taking some money out of projects to support, is on that board presentation.
And nobody's going to say that that isn't a lot of money, but we have 24 buildings where our students are in. Average age, probably close to 80 years old of those buildings. There is a lot of work that has to be done. Those of us who are homeowners know, as we live longer in our houses, lots of work has to be done, and it's expensive. Imagine schools with 250, 350, 550, 1,400 kids in and out all day long, 180 days out of a school year, and there's wear and tear, just maintenance, general maintenance on those buildings.
Mr. Kanken?
I would like to dovetail on what Dr. Rocco says. As a homeowner, we all know it costs money to maintain your house. You know, you want to put a roof on your house, $7,000, $8,000. If you want to put a roof on a school, it's $7, $8 million. Big difference. And for us to cut anything or try to remove capital reserve or transfer, which we can't do, is the biggest mistake we could ever make because they didn't fund capital reserve in the 90s and the early 2000s, and we're paying for it right now with all the problems that we have in these facilities. So $14 million, almost $15 million seems like a lot of money, but not when you have the buildings that we have that are 80 years old. And, you know, there's a lot of stuff that people can't see in the walls, you know, the ceilings, the floors. There's a lot of stuff that you can't see that costs money. You know, abatement costs money, a lot of money. So we're better off to have the money than not have the money. So, and we've been, I've been, since I've been on this board, I've been fighting tooth and nail in facilities to get that money, and I'm not about to give it up.
You know, it costs more than, you know, it costs more than maintaining the buildings, not maintaining them, right?
Well, we could always not maintain them and save all that money, but 10 years from now, we're going to, it's going to cost us four times that.
Exactly.
It won't take that long before they deteriorate. Can I follow up? So is there a confusion here between capital reserve and, what's the other term? What is it?
Maintenance reserve?
No, don't we have another category? Or do we transfer everything into capital reserve? We used to have the excess monies that balanced the budget. I can't think, I'm losing my mind tonight, I can't think of what the term is, a line item. Yeah, that's why I'm having problems with it.
I'm trying to help you there, but.
What is it? Surplus, surplus, there you go. Is there, is there, is there, do we have surplus? That's my question, because we normally do.
Well, we use surplus to balance the budget every year.
Do we have totals right now? Do we have a surplus total as of right now? And do we have a capital reserve total as of right now? I'd like to hear the numbers, not the...
Yeah, so Dr. McShane gave the totals of the capital reserve.
I couldn't hear herself.
14 million, I believe, is what.
14 million?
14, nine, basically 15. If you're rounding it.
All right, 15, no.
In capital reserve.
For every month that you guys approve, there's balances right there. We're also in the audit, when you look at reserves, it's really best to look at June 30th. You're only allowed to keep, 4% or 3%?
In surplus, is that right?
And we do not have any excess surplus, if that's your question. We only keep the amount of surplus that we're allowed to by law, and then we budget usually every year about $5 million. I don't have my audit in front of me, I wish I did.
Do you know the surplus number right now? The number? I understand the other...
We don't have excess surplus. Any surplus that we have, we've used to balance the budget.
So I can say there's zero surplus right now?
No.
Excess means over the allowable amount.
Well, that's what I'm getting at. What is the number in the budget, in that budget item right now? What is the number in that surplus line?
The budgeted fund balance of surplus is $5 million.
$5 million, okay.
And where is that, Ms. Atwood? Is it under the treasurer's report, the financial certification?
Should be on the auditor's secretary's report.
The budgeted surplus is actually in the presentation. He showed it's a revenue source. In the treasurer's report, only in DOE's budget do they allow surplus to be a line item for revenue. It's not really a revenue source. So in the treasurer's report, you see it at the end when it says recapitulation of balances, and it shows. So right now, it shows that we budgeted, I think, $5 million, and right now it shows we have more than $5 million because we haven't spent our full budget. And it's projecting a higher surplus than what we budgeted, but that's only because we haven't spent our full budget.
We have outstanding POs and other things.
You need to carry surplus. I mean, I'm just trying to figure out what the numbers are.
That's a, I believe, that's a moving target throughout the whole year.
Well, remember the auditor comes and says you have to have, I forget, what does he say, 3% to 4% or something like that? And we're within that range. He says, he says this, that's kind of the spot you have to be in. In the last couple of years, he said that's exactly where we are. Not too little, not too much.
We're sort of near the lower end of that.
Lower end of that.
We were up around 4, I believe, 4.8 or 5, close to 5% two years ago. But with the increase in our transportation costs and other costs due to supplies that we needed for the district, that number has moved from like 4.5% down to closer to 3.2%. So we're at the bottom of the range, the surplus range. If we fall below that, we're in danger of defaulting, so.
He always refers to how much surplus we can regenerate every year, and he always recommends a certain amount to regenerate. I have pulled up the audit, I'm trying to read it from the side.
I do believe, though, a number of years ago, the district was required to regenerate $11 million in surplus just to balance the budget. And we've reduced that over time by half.
Yeah.
On purpose.
On purpose.
For stability of the budget.
Correct, so we don't get those peaks and valleys.
Also, the big increase came during those COVID years too, right? Because there was less spending.
Federal funding came.
We don't get those peaks and valleys.
Correct.
With the budget, we sort of get little humps now.
Well, at this point, do I have any other questions from board members?
You know, I think one thing that might help the community is to explain the breadth of transportation. It's not just picking up our students. It's field trips. It's when we have students who need to go other places out of district, we have to transport them. We transport children to private schools. We transport children to charter schools. And I remember clearly having a conversation with representatives from the legislature. If we have a child that goes homeless in our district and say moves to Bergen County, we are responsible to pick that child up, bring them back to the district, and bring them back home for a year until they get a stable position. Those are all the different requirements we have for transportation, which drives up our budget.
You know, that's a good point, because I think there's a couple of items that I would like to, not, I don't need it right now, but in the future, I think Ms. Friar brought up a good point. I think we need to know how many of those children are like that. How many are we transporting to other schools? I think when you look at that, you might get a better picture as to what we are spending our tech, the community's tax dollars on for transportation.
Then, President, just as a point of order, there was a motion that was seconded to call the question, so I believe we need to vote on that motion.
Just tell me what I'm voting on.
Ms. Atwood?
End the debate and just move to voting on the budget.
Atwood, can you call, roll call on that, please?
To vote on the final adoption of the term.
Oh, no, no.
I can't hear you, but I believe he said we have a motion to immediately move to the...
End the debate.
To debate budget.
A motion to immediately end the debate, and then if that passes with a 2/3's vote, it then goes to the motion on...
A motion to immediately end the debate and then if that passes with a two thirds vote, it then goes to the motion on the budget.
And that's Ms. Harvey.
Yeah, I think it was seconded.
I seconded.
Roll call, please. Harvey?
Yes.
For Kanka?
Yes.
Dr. McSheen?
No.
Soto?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Fern?
No.
Dr. Salantano?
No.
Dr. Farrar?
Yes.
Thornton?
Yes.
Yes is right. Out of nine?
Three out of the nine, no.
You have six yeses, yeses.
Ms. Atwood, could you please call roll call for the resolution for the adoption of, the final adoption of the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget? Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Kanka?
Yes.
Dr. McSheen?
Yes.
Soto?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Fern?
No.
Dr. Salantano?
No.
Dr. Farrar?
Yes.
Thornton?
Yes.
But this time, we're going to move on to committee reports. I'm going to ask Vice President Harvey if she can take over the meeting. I just am going to step out.
Thank you. Mr. Kanka, would you like to start with the, with, oh, actually, I guess we have curriculum first, so. Dr. Farrar, curriculum and instruction.
Good evening, everyone. The CNI committee met on Wednesday, April seventeenth, and all three members were present. Mr. Scotto opened his portion of the meeting with Janice Glonick's favorite topic. Are you still here? You are, Ms. Glonick. Cursive writing. And I hope this is the last report I have to do on cursive writing, to tell you the truth, because I think we got it covered. Those of you who follow board meetings know that this has been a topic of conversation for several months, with Mr. Scotto reinforcing the district's commitment to teaching cursive in the classroom that begins at the end of second grade and continues through third grade. However, due to the pandemic, there was a concern that students who missed those lessons during COVID might like the opportunity to practice cursive. To that end, a district teacher was tapped to make a series of instructional videos on the process of cursive writing. Five videos and additional resources will be released in the next few weeks. The video topics include proper posture, lowercase letters, uppercase letters, writing words and writing sentences. The committee saw a portion of these videos. The videos and the resources will ultimately be accessible in what is known as a Bitmoji classroom. And for those of you who are robins in the audience, find a child to show you one of the Bitmoji classrooms. It's a virtual classroom and you can click on little things in the classroom and it will take you to wherever you need to go. There, the resources in that Bitmoji classroom are like lined paper and other things can be downloaded and printed. Faculty and staff participated in a March fifteenth in-service day. The first half of the day involved building-based activities designed by the principals. The second half of the day was district-based and staff were able to choose from a menu of sixty different sessions. Those of you who attended Hamilton Schools likely remember the Grade Three Hamilton Social Studies Unit. It's a history unit with a bus tour component around the township and what I've always heard referred to as the Blue Book. Lots of you have told me that the Blue Book needed updating. This year, Ms. Stanton heard much of the same and she also recognized the Blue Book as the same one she had used when she attended school. And now the members of the CNI committee can tell you all, the Blue Book has been updated and it's been made into an electronic version. Earlier this year, a committee was formed to revise the Grade Three Social Studies Unit on Hamilton's history. The revised and enhanced version has three sections, Hamilton landmarks, Lenny, Lenny Lenape and Colonists and Hamilton Today. Additional geographically, geography resources have been added to the document. Embedded within the unit are sample pacing guides for teachers, sample activities, projects, online quizzes and presentations. Next, Mr. Scotto talked with us about the dual enrollment updates. You heard this evening Dr. Rocco talk about the agreement with the College of New Jersey. And I will read you a portion of the agreement. This agreement is between our district and the AP courses that we teach here. So the time to receive the post-secondary degree is going to be compressed because of this agreement. So students in AP classes can convert that grade into academic credit at the College of New Jersey and transfer those credits to the College of New Jersey. The cost to receive a post-secondary degree may be significantly reduced by this option and ability to take an AP class that can convert to credits at TCNJ. Our highly qualified high school teachers will be able to teach the dual enrollment courses, so we're not hiring any other teachers, but our AP teachers will be, I think they're going to be interviewed, are they not, Dr. Rocco?
They may be interviewed, but they've already had a material review by the College of New Jersey of what their qualifications are.
Okay, so then they are qualified to teach it. And the dual enrollment courses will use the TCNJ-approved syllabus as the curriculum for the course taught. It's really a win-win and it's, it's a very exciting time to see the colleges work with us because, let's face it, some, some children are ready to do that. Some students are ready to take on those adventures and that we can offer them that, those adventures is really, to me, very, very exciting. There is another institution that has come forward and wants to talk with us and so we might even have more good news down the road. Finally, the committee received an update on the high school course levels for the twenty four, twenty five school year. During the February board meeting where Mr. Scotto gave the state assessment presentation, he mentioned that the district has been piloting a course-level initiative at High School West. And that pilot focused on offering three main levels of high school courses. College prep, also referred to as CP, honors and advanced placement, which we call obviously AP. This pilot eliminated the B level from the college prep program. So instead of offering two levels of classes under college prep, A and B, there was one level. The results have been positive. The high school principals had a conversation with the administration and they are going to go ahead and put this into action for the twenty four, twenty five school year. We'll have three levels, college prep, honors and advanced placement. And that is all that we looked at in our committee.
Thank you, Dr. Farrar. Mr. Kanka, would you like to give us the finance and operations committee report?
Yes. I'll make it short since we were long-winded tonight. Just put me on the clock.
I was gonna say, I'm ready to time down.
I'm putting in for overtime. We met, the committee met on the seventeenth of the month, last, last Wednesday at eight thirty AM. I would like to thank the committee members who were there, plus everyone from the administration. We, we started out with the, some general, the general comments from Dr. Rocco on his week, his monthly updates and throughout the, throughout the district, some of his comments that he brought up. Then we moved into initiative items. The first item on the agenda was the baseball field at Nottingham High School, which was, was brought to the attention of the committee about the, the completion time of that, that project. And so we, we, with the help of administration, we, we got ahold of Scott White from New Roads Construction. He joined in on the conversation and answered many of our questions about what the delays were. And the biggest factor was we had such a beginning, we had such a wet beginning or the end of March and the beginning of April, that the, the new sod that was put down on the infield apparently didn't have time, what they call it, to knit into the ground and knit within itself because you need, apparently you need a lot of sunshine and some fair weather days and we had nothing but rain. And when it finally did start to dry out, it rained again. So the two and a half weeks that was allotted for the knitting took four weeks due to the, due to the lack of sunshine and heavy rain. So then we, we also spoke about how the sod was laid out on the field and there was some, some grading issues that, that we, we talked about. And there was also a question about the netting around the field that would protect baseballs from being hit into the side of the building or the opposite way to the, to a field adjacent to, to the baseball field. And we were assured that those nettings would be installed prior to the verse, the game that was going to be played there, which was, I believe, last Monday and they were. And what I did was my, I, I talked to, I talked to the board president and I, I told her that I was gonna go over and walk the fields. And I called Principal Regazzo up and made an appointment to go over there. We walked the field with the athletic director and we marked out a couple places that we thought needed to be addressed. And as a matter of fact, our grounds guys were there and working on the field and they, they told, they told us that they would be addressing the issues that were concerned for us. So, and everything apparently got done. The game went off as planned and everybody was happy, except Mrs. Thornton didn't, did tell me that she was there and she said the nets were beautiful, but one ball went over the net and went into the parking lot. So, and then a concern was brought up, another one was brought up about, what about, you know, the outfield with Hamilton Avenue? And I understand that there was a, a home run that landed on Hamilton Avenue. So that was a moonshot from one of these high school kids that went out there because that right, that left field foul line is actually further than Yankee Stadium foul line, so. But the, the game went off as planned, the field looks fantastic. There's gonna be some upgrades to the sod in the foul territory area. So hopefully we'll get that all straightened out and, and we can continue to play ball over there. Then we basically, we went into, we went, we talked about the budget, which you saw Dr. Rocco's presentation today. And we, we did talk about the, the effect on the budget with the charter school. At that, at that time, there hadn't been an official announcement, which we don't now know that there is. It's official, so it's, it's gonna be, it was gonna be a big strain on our budget. There was a couple of questions that I had on that because I, I talked to Mrs. Atwood about what was the cost per student in Hamilton Township? And I believe she said to me it was about eighteen thousand, thousand dollars per student. And charter schools, with, you look at the numbers there and based on the projections that the state said, and which we all know the state is, hasn't gotten anything right in many years, it says that we're gonna be, it's gonna be a projection of about twenty two thousand dollars per student. And I'm just trying to figure out why is there such a disparity between twenty two for them and eighteen for us? But the state set the, set the mandates and we have to abide by them. Next on the agenda was the RFP for the food service. And the district is going to make a change this year from Aramart to.
Assagios or some, some, macios or something?
Assios?
She's macios. Macios, they came in.
Home cooking.
And apparently there's, there's been some experiences in other districts and got some really high comments and from other districts. And there's been a lot of talk over the past few years about the, our current food vendor. And so we, we put it out for RFP and I believe there was four people that, four companies that applied and they were the, they came out number one in the, in the interview process. So we're going to be making that move effective July first, twenty twenty one, and that will run through June thirtieth of twenty five. The next item on the list was the health benefits plan we spoke about. That was also brought up with the committee. And on tonight's agenda, there's a move to, to move out of the state health benefit plan and move into a, a more efficient private plan. And it's gonna, that's also gonna take place the first of July. The board, the, the committee and the administration have been working for many, many, a couple of years now to try to, to, to make it more efficient and more cost-effective to the taxpayer. But when the state come out and said there was gonna be a possible fifteen percent increase, it just made it much easier for us to make that decision. And if you're looking, if you, if you do the math real quick, you know, we spend about thirty million dollars a year on health benefits and they wanna, they wanna increase it by fifteen percent, so just figure the math out there. Where are we gonna get that type of money? So these are some of the things that, that we, that are budget drivers that we have no control over. So we have to, the committee and the administration has to look for more ways to, to, to try to save money wherever we can. Then we moved on to capital projects. The high school labs and, and library curriculum or circulation, I'm sorry. That bid opening happened on the sixteenth and I don't, is that on tonight's agenda for, it's on tonight's agenda for approval? The auditorium phase one, stage lighting and sound system, stage lift, that is on tonight for rejection for the bids that came in and it's gonna be going up for rebid. Boiler replacement at, at Crockett is on, is on for tonight. And the exterior improvements to the Crockett roof is on for tonight. And that improvement is what they call the knee walls in the different levels of roof where the, the roof membrane is attached to the knee wall. Apparently the flashing's gotta be redundant to, to prevent water from getting down between the brick and the, the membrane for the roof. So that, that's on tonight's agenda for approval. Then we talked about, there was some, some Rod Grant projects coming up for the, to be completed in the summer of twenty five. There was a proposal, we're sending a, Spiezel's gonna do a proposal for the McGarry boiler and that's on tonight's agenda for approval. There was a revised proposal for the, for the dishwasher installation. I believe it's at Greys in this school and Reynolds. And what the, the proposal is, is they're going to upgrade the electric. They had to upgrade the electric anyway for the new dishwasher, but we're gonna expand that for, for new equipment that comes in for the kitchen area so we can, so we can secure some more pieces of equipment for, to run the kitchen more effec- efficiently. Oh, there was also a change where we moved over to the Yarva Heights budget project, I'm sorry, the Yarva Heights boiler project. There's gonna be a change order because the boilers, we found that through investigative, looking at some of the univent units, they had some old controls on the univent units, pneumatic controls that, that, some of them predated back to the early nineteen hundreds. So those, this is in the old building over there at Yarva Heights. So they're, they're going to update those controls on those univentilators and, and there's a change order in for that. And.
The short version?
Yes, I believe, let's see, we did go into the all-committee agenda items. There was some discussion about an assistant facilities director and, and I'll, I'll leave the rest for the other committees to discuss. And I would like to go into negotiations. Oh, does anybody have any questions on what I just?
I just have a comment on a couple of things you said.
You got a comment?
Well, comment and maybe a suggestion or maybe a threat, I don't know.
I'll take it as a threat.
With regards to the electrical that you indicated. that we do need in order to accommodate, I guess, new equipment. Do we have a survey on our electrical needs? Because I remember years ago when we had an issue over at Nottingham after they put that addition on, it was a big problem. So I think, and the reason I bring that up is because that is something you can discuss every month, whatever. And so we take them on little by little because something's coming back to me by the individual asked about air conditioning here. If, we probably won't do it all at once. Air conditioning was cost prohibitive and the same thing may happen with electricals. So I think if we look at these every year or whenever, we have the, we have money in capital project to get them done. All right? And the other thing, before we get deluged here tonight with questions about changing health benefits, let me say this so everybody understands it, and I know you all do. It's equal or better. It won't be less of a product. It will be equal or better, hopefully better.
Dr. Kenka, if you'd like to proceed with negotiations committee?
Yeah, and with the electrical upgrades, Mr. Salentown, this is, some of the stuff over at this school and with Greys, you know, those food lines were put in back in the 60s. And so now we're looking at maybe adding some smoothie machines or something like that. Well, we don't have electrical, the electrical builders are doing that right now. So they're trying to enhance the food line for the students to make it more appetizing for them to go in and actually choose what they would like to have to eat or drink or whatever. So back then, we just, back then we used to use steam tables. You know, they filled it up with hot water and they threw the food in there and somebody looked like, looked like a mess hall at Fort Dix or something. She was there with a spoon slopping it on that metal tray.
About Fort Dix.
We don't have, we don't do that no more. So, and so we're gonna move into negotiations. We started, as I reported in the past, we started our negotiations with the HTEA. We had a, we had a long meeting again today. I feel that we're making significant progress and I'll just leave it at that. And there's been a lot of discussion going on. And Mr. Carrick and I spoke tonight a little bit about what happened or what we did today. Because, you know, we feel that we can hopefully get this done in the next session or so.
Thank you, Mr. Kenka.
Can't answer any questions on that, though.
Dr. McSheen, would you like to take us through Personnel Committee?
Yes, I would. So the Personnel Committee met, oh, we had a change in schedule. So we actually met on Tuesday at 6:30, sorry, Tuesday, April 16th at 6:30 PM. The attendance was the full committee, Ms. Thornton and Ms. Soto, myself, as well as the administration. We were updated on the same items that the other two committees were updated on, most of which you've heard already tonight, including items such as the food service, RFP that we just heard from Mr. Kenka, and the budget. So moving on to the personnel items specifically, we have a few things that are up for vote tonight that we went into discussion on. Importantly, we have first, an update in long-term substitutes, including a long-term substitute principal. This is on item five. We had a great presentation from Mr. O'Boyle on the IT department instructional technology. It was great hearing how the IT department, especially in the instructional technology part, really has evolved over the last few years. I learned that there is such a position or, I'm not sure if you'd call it position, but there's 36 tech liaisons throughout the schools who are basically the champions of tech in their schools. And they learn, their job is really to help incorporate in the classroom and help solve problems with tech. And not even just problems, not like servicing, making sure that routers are working or anything, but make sure that the instructional use of the technology is great. And I think this is a really cool benefit to our district. We also discussed a bunch of job descriptions, which, one of which being an IT assistant director that we heard some comments on from Mr. O'Boyle. In addition to that, we have the MTSS, which you might have heard tonight, which is the multi-tiered student service. System support, sorry. System support facilitator. We have elementary vice principal, which we also heard in our budget discussions tonight. We have a revision to middle school vice principal job descriptions, which was, I think, a revision just to kind of bring it in line with what we're expecting nowadays out of our vice principals and make sure everything's aligned, as well as the high school vice principal positions. And then also, we heard also about the assistant facility director position. So these are all under item 17 for Personnel. We also went over the 24, 25 calendars for staff, the 12-month employees, the LDTCs, which are learning disability teacher consultants and psychologists, the athletic trainers, the part-time custodians, and the tradespeople. We were also informed about the, a draft stay interview. So I know this had come up during DCR. And this, I think it'd come up actually at public board meetings as well, where, you know, we had discussed the importance of exit interview when teachers or staff are leaving the district, trying to understand why, so that we can, you know, hopefully make the district a more suitable place and understand the reasons why they're leaving. But what was the reason for them to stay in the first place, which is also a benefit? So there is a draft stay interview that is, I'm not sure if it's been implemented yet, but is in the works, great. We heard about a, oh, a student-teacher meet and greet event that happened on the 10th of April, which is great. I think it's a helpful tool to help, you know, keep recruitment and keep morale for people who are learning the district and hopefully staying in education and maybe, knock on wood, staying in Hamilton when they start their careers. We're also updated on vacancies and additional recruitment activities. So that's it for Personnel specifically. Are there any comments from my committee members?
Good questions. Jason, what has changed with the middle school and high school vice principal definition or whatever? Because it says revision here. I'm looking at the two of them. I don't, I don't know what the changes would be if there are any.
Sure, I can address that.
Mr. Copeland's gonna, Dr. Copeland's gonna address that.
Those job descriptions were revised to specifically add the background check that is required of the state. So every employee is required to have a background check. Specific language was added to both of those job descriptions just to indicate that an individual needs to be able to pass a state background check.
Okay, but again, that's great to know now. But I'm used to things when they change, you either bracket it or you highlight them or something like that. So I don't have any problem with that as you explained it. But I think it deserved a question.
Can I piggyback off of that? Dr. Copeland, does that mean just someone new coming in the district and not say if we do an internal hire, they don't have to redo their background check?
No, they do not.
Thank you. Dr. McSheen, thank you for Personnel Committee. Do you have a report for DCR committee?
I do, I do have a brief one. So we met on April 16th, right before the Personnel Committee, where we continued discussions on curriculum, recruitment and retention, suspension findings, and climate and culture. First off, I want to highlight the extra effort that our volunteers have made throughout the year. It's, I know we don't quite have as much face time here with the full public, but we've had numerous teachers and staff members, as well as parents and other community members who've come to these events and let us know their concerns, but also not just dumping concerns on us, but looking to make an impact and, you know, bring their ideas and not only what they've heard from their students potentially, but, you know, sometimes experiences from other districts, sometimes experiences from their neighbors and such. So I really appreciate that. I also want to give a shout out to Amanda Asquith, who's been the leader for two years, I believe, the last two years. Her energy has helped keep the group together and moving forward with our task to, you know, bring recommendations to the board and the district as a whole. I also want to give a congratulations to Lady Cassandra Hodges-Jones, who will be the next chair for next year as Amanda Asquith is stepping down after two years of hard effort and well-deserved, I believe. So congratulations to Ms. Hodges-Jones on that. And I'm looking forward to hopefully working with her and hearing from the committee next year. So our final meeting for the year is May 14th at 5:00 PM at Reynolds here. And if you're interested in hearing what the DCR has done throughout the year and looking how you can get involved, much like the facilities group, this is also open to everyone, so please feel free to come out. And also, sorry, I am, I would be remiss if I didn't call out a couple of the items that we actually talked about, which include, funny enough, and I know there might be a member out there who might be interested, we talked about cursive a little. We also talked about the need for our students to be able to type well. In this world where we obviously do, you know, everyone here has a laptop out, so you can understand how important typing is. Students are also using typing for their work in the classroom. And when students can't type well, it takes very long. And when you have that impediment there, you know, it's just one more hurdle for student achievement. So not that it was a huge item, but I think it was worthwhile bringing up because of all the discussion of cursive, which, you know, could be, you know, well-needed. We also talked a lot about student safety, which I really want to give a shout out to Chanel Vickers Ames, who's, we've heard here, I'm not sure if she's here tonight, but she, she is?
Yeah, she's in the back door.
She has been adamant about assessing the safety, especially in regards to traffic and student crossing situations. And I think that's super important. She has made it her personal mission in linking with the township and the district to make stuff like that happen. We've also had great conversations about how we can retain teachers, like I mentioned. And finally, we started diving into the last couple of months, basically restorative practices to make sure that when our students run into challenges, whether they're social, emotional, or learning, or something like that, that they're not just being cast aside, not that we do that, but really looking at opportunities to help them go past just remediation. Like really helping them understand what their challenges are and helping them overcome them. And I think that's, you know, the direction that the district really has to take. So again, these are all not my ideas. These are ideas of a bunch of people who come out to DCR. So if anything like that is of interest to you, May 14th, 5:00 PM, Reynolds. Would be great to see you there.
Dr. McSheen, do I have any questions on the monthly suspension report? The monthly HIB report? Do I have any questions on the monthly health report? So at this time, we're going to move on to hearing of the public on agenda items. I do have six individuals that are signed up. Normally, our hearing of the public is 20 minutes. I just asked the board in advance of having our six individuals that would like to come up and speak, that we just extend the hearing of the public for the four minutes so that we can hear everyone that has signed up.
That's fine, but I don't think anybody's gonna have a problem.
Second.
Aye, yes.
Aye, thank you. We'll start with Andy Casimir. Casimir?
See that, we didn't have to do that.
Janice Klonik.
She's already been, oh, no.
Did she sign that in cursive?
No.
Oh.
Did not. She did not.
You didn't sign that in cursive, Janice?
Three minutes, Janice.
Oh, okay. You were on here too, but you know what? If you're not on the second one, we're gonna put you right back on there. So don't worry, okay? Thank you. Jo Marchika.
Oh, I think, is he in the lobby or?
Gunn.
He was here before.
John Mukha.
How you spell that Marika guy? M-A-R.
My name's John Mukha, I'm resident of Hamilton Township. I'll be very brief. It was very enjoyable, the question and answer period that we had. It was good dialogue, refreshing. Maybe we can do that at the beginning of the school board meetings instead of getting in the middle of a very long meeting here. I think we have a couple of things we have to concentrate on, two things. We all exist here because of the consent of the governed. And it should be informed consent. And the other thing is home rule. So we saw some degree of informed consent happening tonight. I don't think it's enough. My impression is that even the board members themselves are not fully informed about all the ins and outs of the budget. And I know that's a challenge, but I think we can do better with that. And certainly the public is not informed. Now, I took a particular interest in the most recent school board election, of course. Only 23% or 26% of the registered voters even bothered to cast a vote, a vote for the school board. And the ones that I talked to, a lot of them completely have no idea what the school board is up to. So how do we fix that? That's a challenge for you to figure out, how to make this more friendly for those of us that are out in the community. You hear you talk about the community, want to do something for the community, want the community to understand, and yet there's no one here, really, basically. Small crowd, some watching on Zoom. We can do a lot better than this. So let's try to come up with some ideas.
Thank you, Mr. Mukha. Jessica Trombino.
Hello, and thank you all again for all that you guys do for...
Can you talk a little closer to my mic?
Could you speak right into the mic for us, please?
Thank you all for your public service. I understand, I really appreciate the intention of the budget, but I really feel like there is something lacking in what, in the budget that we have been doing all along. I think that there is maybe some gaps or some areas that need to be readdressed because something, I think that there is a, you have the budget that you have, you have state aid, and I don't, I just don't understand how, taking a school that has like, honestly, a third of the students are even making it in the standards, I think that we're gonna be putting a whole lot of, I mean, I can see putting money into safety and putting money into certain necessary things. And I'm all for all of that, but when it comes to the, you know, new books and all kinds of new things, I think that we should probably cut back on any of those types of part, aspects of the budget. And I think that, I don't think it's, I don't think it's necessary. I don't, I just don't feel that the whole budget, it seems inflated, very inflated. And I just, I understand that you have to negotiate for, you know, to get teachers that are wanting to work for this school system. But I think that, I think that maybe there should be an incentive. Maybe we, this is just an idea, but when it comes to like, like what you're budgeting already, you can compile like, an expense for specific programs and make sure that you're not, you know, I don't know, like, like when I mentioned the driver's ed program, how many students are actually, you know, sitting behind the wheel? And how, is there an itemized list of the budget going towards what is necessary? Or what is needed? And is there a rollover? Is it, how much rollover is there? And where is that rollover? And where is that rollover, or is that surplus? Or like, how does that work? I mean, I feel like I would really appreciate, I have a couple of students that graduated from Steiner and are in Steiner, and I would like to see like, I would love to see an itemized detail of an expense for each of these programs that are already being budgeted in. And I, you know, I just, I just don't think that we have, you know, a solid, I, we don't know where everything is going. And I mean, I'm not trying to, there's no embezzlement, I'm sure, going on or anything like that, but I feel like there is money that you guys have that maybe you could just consolidate it in places that it's being, it's not being used properly, or whatever. I just think that why, and especially if we have a third of the students, maybe we could have an incentive. Like, let's get the students at least 50% of success, at least meeting or exceeding the criteria before we bring in a whole another, you know, a whole bunch more. I think that we need to work on our students getting better academically before we, you know, start buying all kinds of new this and new that. But I mean, I'm not, that's just, I just don't know that I would think that it's necessary right now. I would love to see that the school, this district does better with what we have before we, you know, adopt that kind of a bigger budget. Thank you.
Lisa Linkowski.
Hello again. Alrighty. Regarding the charter schools, Jo had mentioned in just a little over a week, we had 765 signatures. And they don't have the same kind of transparency as like what we're seeing here tonight. I just saw today, a list of 30 worst schools in New Jersey was released, and three of the 30 were charter schools. That's 10%. And there's a quote on an article that was recently out about the TCA conversion, that they need to operate on four or five-year contracts with the NJDEP, and they must meet rigorous academic, financial, and operational benchmarks to continue to operate. If a charter school is not performing academically, operationally, and financially up to state standards, they can be closed. Dr. Rocco, you noted that the Board of Ed will be working on next steps with regard to a potential appeal. And it's important for the public to understand that Mr. Salentano has a previous relationship with not one, but two charter schools in our district. And according to several media publications back in 2017, he was serving as board president, and he was quietly working behind the scenes on two failed attempts to open a new charter school in this 40-square-mile township. It wasn't until high-ranking officials in the district and the Board of Ed realized that he was simultaneously sitting on the school board and on a separate founding team that attempted twice to establish a new charter school in Hamilton. It was shot down, the Teresa M. Frederick Steam Academy Charter School, and it would have been over where we're actually ironically going to be putting the new mayor, Board of Ed, all of that, on White Horse Mercival Road. Mr. Salentano also played a role in the founding of Pace Charter School, which opened in 1999. So I just think it's really important to remind the public of where one of our board members stands, who sat here this evening and said, you know, he would never have even thought about a charter school. And here he is responsible for one that is right now currently in our district. I also wanted to make a point that there are 42 people attending via Zoom, and I think that people tend to forget about that because they're not seen. So while we had 20 attendees, we did have 42 people, and I want to say thank you for that. And lastly, please consider having the final budget hearing on a separate night from the full Board of Ed meeting to welcome community input and not create a four-hour-plus meeting. My little bedtime thing just came up on my Apple here, and it said, "Time for bed, 10 o'clock." And I know it's really late for you guys, but maybe just something to think about for the future. Thank you guys, as always.
Mr. Marchika, I had called you, but I believe you had stepped out. So if you'd like to come up, this is for agenda items. So is your comment on agenda items, something that's on the agenda that we'll be voting on this evening? If not, you have the option to come at the second hearing. Okay, thank you. So that does conclude the hearing of the public on agenda items. And if we can move on to curriculum and instruction. Dr. Farrar, can you take us through curriculum and instruction?
Gladly. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, I move items one through 12.
Second.
And Madam President, before we vote, I just, if it's okay, would like to highlight a couple of things so that people understand what we're voting on. Items one and three are renewals of agreement for the district's transition program. And this program was established in the 2018-2019 school year. It's a postgraduate program. So in our special services department, not all of our students leave the district at 18. They are allowed to stay until the age of 21. And this transition program takes the students who have already completed, either completed their studies, or still are needing to complete their studies, and they go into this transition program, which gives them the opportunity to explore careers, job site training. So for three years, we had three individual programs. And then in the 22-23 school year, we made one transition program that operates out of the Hamilton Public Library in the morning. That's where their classes take place. Their phys ed takes place with the YMCA. So those are the two agreements that we're voting on tonight. And so the students are transitioned from student life to adult life. They, in the gym, they not only take their phys ed, but they're in, you know, they're not in a school gym now, they're in a public gym, a community gym. They are also working in the community. We have students who are working at a law firm. We have a student working at Panera, one at Hamalate, Red Robin. So we're just voting on those agreements to continue those programs in those spaces. And since Dr. McSheen's no longer on my committee, I am going to take over his celebration of donations, because we have two really nice ones this month. The Watershed Institute up in Pennington provided plants, rocks, and a watering cart to Alexander Elementary School. The school qualified for certification as a river-friendly school. It required them to take, I think, four classes. Rutgers Cooperative Extension had already installed a rain garden at the end of the parking lot. And then the Watershed brought in plants and river rocks. And the younger kids put their river rocks in, and they're so cute. They like make a little path and everything. The garden collects the water runoff from downspouts on the building and the parking lot, and that pushes it back into the ground. I looked at the, I went out to look at the garden. It's really beautiful. It's one of three rain gardens we have in the district. There's one at East, and there's one at West. And there will be two at the new municipal building. I also wanted to acknowledge that Haldeman Subaru, through the Subaru Loves Learning Program, donated $5,000 to Yardville School. And 10 teachers will get $500 each for the STEM program. So we certainly thank the community for helping us with those projects.
Do I have any questions on curriculum, instruction, agenda items? Dr. McSheen?
I just wanted to highlight two of the items I think are really impactful. First, the item number four, which is the memorandum of understanding between the Progressive Center for Independent Living and our schools. Now, I have not heard direct feedback yet. Is this the second year that we've done this?
I think it's more than a second year. I think we've done it several years.
Yeah, either way, you know, it's, it's important to make sure that we're trying to meet students where they are and make sure that we're preparing them as well as we can with the resources we're able to. So I appreciate this partnership in which they're going to be, you know, learning vocational skills and such, in a similar manner to what we heard tonight from our Reynolds students. I would also like to highlight, again, what Dr. Rocco brought up earlier, the agreement between us and TCNJ for dual enrollment. I think that's an incredible step. And I have not heard of as many advances in reaching, you know, post-secondary education as Hamilton has done in the last few years. And I think that's fantastic. And when we think of, you know, ways we can differentiate ourselves from different districts and that we're surrounding, in the surrounding area, you know, sometimes we talk about budgets and taxes and such, and, but I think it's also important to really think about the programs like the driver's ed that we've heard behind the wheel, which is cool and unique, and not every district has that, and things like this. I think it's really important to just highlight these, because it doesn't happen by accident, and it happens by discussions like this, it happens by the hard work of the administration to keep going in some cases, and in some cases, establish. So appreciate that.
Thank you, Dr. Do I have any other questions? Ms. Atwood, can you take us through roll call? Harvey?
Yes.
Dr. Kanka?
Yes.
Dr. McSheen?
Yes.
Soto?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Byrne?
Yes.
Dr. Salentano?
Yes.
Dr. Farrar?
Yes.
Thornton? Yes on all, on number three. It's an amazing program, and I absolutely support it, but I am conflicted, so I do need to abstain on three. Motion's passed. I'm gonna move the agenda around just a little bit. I'm gonna switch finance and operation and personnel. So I'd like to, Dr. McSheen, can you take us through personnel, please?
Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, I move personnel items one through 18. Second.
Do I have any questions in regards to any personnel items? Ms. Byrne?
I want to account for how many psychiatrists we have on the payroll in Hamilton. I couldn't hear you, Mrs. Byrne, I'm sorry.
Ms. Byrne, I apologize, I wasn't able to hear you.
I'd like an account for how many psychologists we have on the payroll right now.
The actual number, I think, between LDT season psychologists is somewhere around 30. I don't have the exact number, we'd have to.
What's on the agenda is not the full, there's others, correct?
Yes. Yes, so. Yeah, 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 this is just the non-tenured, this is the non-tenured staff. So next month, you will see a list of approval of tenured staff. So this is just the folks that are non-tenured right now.
Have any other questions?
On personnel?
Personnel. Well, I'm waiting to see if I have any other questions. I would like to go through our retirements. We do have a few retirements here this evening. And if you take all of the years that they have dedicated to Hamilton, it's quite a lot. So we have educational assistant at Crockett Middle School, 22-year service to Hamilton, Jean Carney. Speech and language specialist, Greys Middle School, 24-year service to Hamilton, Susan Oberweis. General lead person and Carpenter Facilities Department, 42-year service to Hamilton Township, Brian Pereira. Special education teacher, Hamilton High School East, Hamilton High School North, and Hamilton High School West, 31-year service to Hamilton, Lucia Di Lorenzo Resch. And health and physical education teacher at Hamilton High School North, 39-year service to Hamilton, Peter Capone. I want to wish you all. I want to wish you all the best in your retirement. Thank you so much for your dedication to Hamilton, and you will all be truly missed. Do I have any other questions from board members on personnel?
39 years of teaching driver ed.
39, we have a lot of really amazing drivers on the road, thanks to Mr. Capone.
Glad we're accident-free.
So, any others? Ms. Atwood, can you take us through roll call? Ms. Harvey?
I abstain from 3B lines 100, 203, and 204, and 11A1, and I vote yes to the rest.
Kanka?
I vote yes on everything but motion five, C5. No.
Dr. McSheen?
I abstain on 3E 70, 70, and yes to the rest.
Soto?
I abstain on 11A8 and 18, yes to the rest.
11, can you repeat that, I'm sorry?
Section A, number eight, and 18.
Stanton?
Yes.
Byrne?
So, motion three, 3C, no. 3A, number 11, no. Motion five, C5, no. Motion 17, number 17A3, no. 17A4, no. 17A5, no. 17A6, no. Yes to the rest.
Salentano?
Yes to everything except 3, 3A11, that's a no. 5, C5, is a no. 17, A3, A4, A5, A6, no.
Dr. Farrar?
Just a yes.
Ms. Thornton?
No on 5, C5, and I abstain on number 14, yes on all others.
I believe motion's passed.
I think they did.
Yeah.
Mr. Kanka, can you take us through finance and operation? I apologize.
So one of the items for approval tonight was an administrator for us. She's not new to us, and she's done an outstanding job in the last year. She was up in front of us probably this time last year, when we appointed her the Nottingham AD. And over the span of a year, she's done an absolutely incredible job. She is moving forward in her administrative career now, just appointed moments ago as the vice principal of Nottingham High School, Jessie Mull.
Thank you. Before I say something little, I just wanted to acknowledge and honor Dawn White, who I am replacing. Dawn has been a huge mentor for me, and so I appreciate all she has done. I would like to thank Dr. Rocco, the board members, Frank Regazzo, and the administrative team at Nottingham for this opportunity. Denzel Washington once said, "Luck is when an opportunity comes along and you're prepared for it." Luckily, I am prepared. It has been an honor serving this past year as AD, and I'm so excited to continue as an educational leader. Thank you very much.
I also just want to acknowledge Jessie's mom, who's a retired secretary here, who came out last year and is here again. So thank you for coming out. Thank you for supporting your daughter, thank you for supporting us, thank you for coming out to the board meetings.
So we'll move to finance and operations. Dr. Kanka, can you take us through finance and operations?
As per recommendation of the superintendent, I move finance and operation items, motions one through 24.
Second.
Do we have any questions on finance and operations?
They were spending too much money, but that's besides the point.
If none, Ms. Atwood, can you take us through roll call?
Harvey?
Yes.
Kenka?
Yes.
Dr. McSheen?
Yes.
Soto?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Byrne?
Yes.
Salantano?
Yes.
Dr. Farrar?
Yes.
Thornton?
Yes.
So at this time, we do have other business. Do any board members have anything for other business? Ms. Soto?
I would just like to echo Mrs. Lankowski's comments about the board considering next year having a separate meeting for the budget discussion and public input. I thought there was some very thoughtful discussion today, and it just deserves its own time, for sure. Secondly, I'd also like the board to consider restructuring the agenda. I know we, the biggest highlight of the meetings are the students that are here this morning. Many of the families are juggling other children at the homes, as well as our student liaisons from the high school. Perhaps we actually start with them, so the other students in the audience who are showcasing their programs hear about what's going on in the high schools, and then we have the presentation from the students, and then move into executive session. And then that way, those that need to leave to do homework or get to other activities can do so.
Soto, we absolutely will take a look at that. I think those are all really great ideas, and I have to agree with your comment earlier, as well as Ms. Lankowski. It was something that I was thinking as well. Perhaps it's its own separate special meeting when we discuss the budget. So, any other items for other business? Mr. Kenka?
Yes, a lot of, a lot of questions came up tonight that are going to be addressed in the near future as far as, you know, our facilities and everything. And I would like to thank Dr. Rocco, he setting up this strategic planning committee for facilities. And a lot of discussion goes on, a lot of the issues that were brought up tonight. But what I am a little disappointed in is even our attendance at these meetings. You know, this is open to the public to come in, it's posted on our calendar, and if we get five people from the public to come in, the majority of the people that are there are staff or board members. And I understand that we, as a board, we have to be careful that we don't get five of us there. But it's, it's a little discouraging to see the lack of interest when it comes to putting your voice out there for a specific item that the district is trying to, to make open and transparent to the public, and then when we try to implement something, we get nothing but negative feedback on, well, they weren't involved, and stuff like that. So I would like to see more people out there with their, because everybody's got ideas. You know, not all of us up here, and not the administration, has all the answers. Sometimes, you know, somebody, just the slightest little different comment could ring a bell with a, with a, with a staff member or with a board member, and, you know, we could come up with specific ideas to try to make things better within the district. So it's, it doesn't take a lot of time. Our meetings are once a month, and, you know, if we're there an hour, we're lucky. So if you can just spare an hour of your time, I know it's tough because baseball season's with the kids nowadays, but I have three grandkids that play baseball, and I make time to get over there. I try to do whatever I can to, to get over there. And I just would like to see more of the public over there to, for some more input. But, you know, we do have, we do have a lot of people that come up with some tremendous ideas, so, and we're working on a lot of stuff. It just takes time before we put our report together. That's all I have.
Dr. Salantano?
I, I think Richard comes up, but it's, it's a good idea, but sitting here just thinking as he's talking, possibly, is there a way, maybe every month somewhere in, in some type of a media that we could let the parents know, because this is about parents, okay? And they're the stakeholders here, all right? And, you know, in other words, you send something home in Little Anthony's bookbag, you know, there's a meeting this Wednesday or next Wednesday. That may help, I don't know. But the real help was prior, you know, and, and again, the real help was when you had the, you had the TV, which I still think, if you research it, look into it, and talk to the people, I talked at OCR, you can, you can revisit that, because it's no different than when I look at that, that station. There, it's not in five different languages. You have shows there, you have, you have advertisements there, it's, it's, so there's something wrong with that decision, or whoever explained that decision to you. So that's something you may want to think about. I'm not pushing it, I've just said that's something you may want to think about. So while I have the microphone, I'd like to address Mrs. Lankowski's misinformation campaign with regards to myself. It is true, in nineteen ninety-something, I was approached by whoever was running the Pace Charter School to sign or put my name on something because they needed names on the petition, okay? I was on that petition. I never attended any meetings, I never was at any board meeting, I never did anything. And with regards to the most recent one, a few years ago, the misinformation there is that you folks never got the letter from, I forget who was even running that organization. They approached me for a property, and at that time, we decided at where those boxes are now, right next to Kalani's, that property, in fact, if you remember, we went and looked at it, that we didn't want it anymore. And when somebody called me, I think it was Mr. Trimentana called me and said, "Do you know of any property?" And I said, "Yeah, we just turned one down, and we're not going to do anything." Somehow, my name got on that application. Once again, not involved with it, never was, and the owner or the lead person in that sent a letter to this Board of Education, okay, in telling this Board of Education, and I think the BA's office got a copy of it. If not, I still have it, okay? I had nothing to do with that, there was no monetary gain, just like I was accused of having a part in the purchase of that property as if I owned it. And the people who got the address wrong, that was a beauty, they had an address that had, it was borderlocked. But anyhow, this is the same person that comes to our meeting every week and tells you and professes how great Hamilton schools are, but yet she sends her daughter to Allentown High School. This is the same person that comes here and has an organization, is trying to control this Board of Education through elected officials. I'll leave it there, because don't get me started.
Harvey?
Given the, how our agenda's written, I want to propose something, but I understand we still have public to go. I believe, based upon the comments that were made during the budget, that this board should go back into executive session to discuss the charter schools and, and appeal.
Not tonight.
Second.
Is that a motion?
I was braising for discussion. I will make a motion to go into executive session following the second public portion. Second.
Can we finish new business? Of course, now I have to...
Correct, for the purpose of attorney-client privilege.
Well, I have two things. First of all, the other day, somebody on Facebook said, "Hey, we should Oprah the district's budget and see what they spend each month." And I'm like, it's right under finance and operations, and that's where everything is. You can look at where the money goes, what we spend it on, what we have, what we don't have, but it does involve people reading it. I mean, we're not here to read it to everybody. We all read it, I hope, but, you know, it's right there. You can look at what books we buy, where we buy them from, what supplies we buy, who we reimburse for gas, how much we pay referees. It's all in the line item budget. That's one thing. Mr. Salantano, you may have not been involved, but your signature was on that application, was it not?
No.
No, it was, because I have a comment.
Not on the second one, no. On the first one, probably.
On the second one, Mr. Salantano.
Show me it.
I will, I'll send it to you.
We are not going to have a back and forth conversation if this is something that you guys want to discuss.
I'll apologize if it's there, but I can't remember it.
Any other items under other business?
I'm sorry, are we doing the voting on the motion?
Yes.
Do we have a second on the motion?
Second.
Ms. Atwood?
Do we have a second?
Megan.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
No.
Wait a minute, are we going to have a question on this?
The motion is, I believe, after the second public hearing to go back into exec.
For the purpose of receiving client privilege.
Do it at the next meeting. Do it at the next meeting.
In regards...
Comment on the motion?
Sorry, Ms. Lankowski.
You have discussion. Discussion on the motions, what you're asking.
Questions?
First of all. You have a question?
I don't have a question, I got a comment I'd like to make.
So do I. Go ahead, Richard.
I don't, I don't believe that this session is necessary, because we have no control over what the charter school does. The DOE has set the mandates for funding, so what are we gonna, what are we actually going to talk about with charter school?
It's for the purposes of legal advice.
Excuse me?
It's for the purpose of legal advice regarding a potential appeal.
Excuse me?
As is our right as a department of, as a Board of Education under the statute. We have a right to appeal.
But didn't we, didn't we voice our appeals to the DOE before they made this decision?
That wasn't an appeal, that was voicing our concern on the application.
But what's going to change from two months ago to now?
May I request if this is a matter of legal...
I don't think, I think, Jason, I know what you're ready to say, but I don't think this is for, I don't think this is for exec. This is a, this should be discussed publicly, there's nothing that nobody knows. I don't, he could tell us later if this is something you need to know, but I think, if you're going to talk about it, I would like to talk about it publicly, that's number one. Why do we need to go and exec to talk about something everybody knows about?
It's for the purposes of legal advice regarding the merits of an appeal.
I could tell you that, you could tell us that.
Litigation is not supposed to be discussed in public. Litigation is not to be discussed in public at a meeting.
Well, before we do that, then, I'd like to know what we've already spent on appeals, because we've spent money on appeals. I'd like to know where the, where the money's coming from when the potential lawsuit that we, we have on the books. Tell me where it's coming from, and then I'll go in the back room.
We have a motion on the table.
I voted no.
Voted no.
Well, we gotta go to order here. Is it, let's do a roll call.
Roll call.
Yeah.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Kenka?
Jeez, oh, second.
Yes.
Good one.
Dr. McSheen?
Yes.
Soto?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Byrne?
Yes.
Salantano?
No.
Dr. Farrar?
Yes.
Thornton?
Yes.
Do I have any other items for other business?
It's okay.
I had them, I had them a while ago, it feels like thirty minutes ago. One was, I just wanted to echo Mr. Kenka's positivity and frustration around attendance for her DCR.
That was a good comment.
No, it, no, I agree. I think it's great, yes, we've had wonderful people come by and some board members, which I truly appreciate, but we can always use more attendance, and we always, you know, get emails, and we get people come up here where interactions are limited and time is limited, but we have a whole dedicated time slot to working on things like this. And then, oh, the second item, it's kind of an ask to my fellow board members for the next budget rounds. Let's take a break after this for a little bit. But I think we can probably do better in our committees if we're proactively bringing questions like we had today at our first committee meetings when we talk about this, the second committee meeting, the third committee meeting. We, it's not like we've just seen the budget tonight, it's not like we just saw it at the public meeting last month and the month before. This is, what, the sixth or seventh time that we've kind of discussed this. So, you know, it, part, and I'm not excluding myself, I could have better questions, I think. So I'm just saying, overall, we can be more proactive, and that actually helps the district more, because if we do have a better budget, it's helping the students more and more efficiently. And so I think that really goes a long way. You know, whenever you do your last-minute homework, it's not the best thing you can turn in, so I'm just making that ask to the board, with self-acknowledgement that I'm also, could be better.
Can I follow up on that?
Yes, Mr. Kenka, go right ahead.
I don't know how the other, I don't see the other committees' agendas, but I know on the finance and operations, that budget is, has been on for the last five months. And when Dr. Rocco is in the committee meeting, along with Mrs. Atwood, if anybody has any questions or any concerns, we ask them, okay? But I don't know what goes on elsewhere. So i- i- if it's not on the other committees, I don't know, but I know it's on the finance and operation committee every single month.
Well, and we get minutes from your committee, so we can go back and ask you.
Sometimes they're not complete, they're not complete from all committees, to be honest with you. I think that, you know, I appreciate Jason's comments, because I think that what you've seen tonight, whether you like it or not, was healthy, okay? I may disagree, you may disagree, but I think it was healthy, because I think the public would then view us as at least having an IQ over eighty-eight, because sometimes I wonder, like, if we know what the hell we're doing, all right? But, and that's not an opinion, that's a fact.
Believe me, in our committee, he takes a beating. You know, we, we, we don't, we, we're not, we're not easy on him.
And perhaps we can take a look at moving forward, because budget does technically fall under every single committee.
Correct.
But at the same time, it would fall under finance and operation before it gets to curriculum and before it gets to personnel. So we can move forward.
Right.
And I would love to have those conversations more in-depth in every single committee, so that we all have the same overview of the budget and the opportunity to ask questions.
Exactly. If you're asking for full board support, full board should hear and be able to ask their, you know, point out their concerns and what they're looking for and what they're not looking for.
Thank you, Mr. Kenka. I'm going to move on to hearing of the public on school-related matters. We do have four individuals that are signed up. I'll start with Lisa Lankowski.
If she says one word, if she says one word, I'm punching her in the fucking mouth.
Right into the mic.
All right, Lisa Lankowski, H T C S C, I can't even say it, S C E. Oh, boy. Mr. Salantano, thank you so much for calling out my child this evening. I would like to remind the board that there are people here that have homeschooled their kids, and it does not matter, right? So, does not matter. And it's odd that you remember that I have a daughter and where she went to school, and that you chose to bring that up. But since you said that this was a campaign...
I don't mean to interrupt you, but I think you, I think you forgot that she showed up for a meeting a couple months ago.
Salantano? Mr. Salantano? Hold on one moment. Ms. Lankowski?
Yeah, excuse me, I'm sorry about that, but it was very inappropriate.
School-related matters.
I understand. Quote from not a smear campaign, but from the media, I know it's fake news for some people. "The state rejected the proposed STEAM school last year," this is 2017, "for failing to meet general requirements of a qualified applicant. Had the state not rejected the proposed facility, Salantano would have served on the charter school's Board of Advisors according to the failed application," which can be applied by Oprah, so we'll make sure that we get to the bottom of this. But it's not a smear campaign, this was all reported on. Also, the group that I represent, we don't control the board and the elections. In fact, it's because of our group that we actually have attendance, and we actually have people paying attention to these meetings, because they weren't. We're one of the only entities out there that promotes this on a regular basis and talks about it, and sits there and goes through so that the community knows what's going on with all the various things, because people are living at fifty-five million miles per hour, and it's hard to grab their attention, and they don't realize how, what's going on, and they get deeply sunk into their own personal lives. And Mr. Kenka had mentioned about, what do we do to get more community involvement? We can't get people to do the PTA. One of my, one of my things that I was going to bring up at this point was that PTA elections are happening. We held a general interest meeting last night, and no one came, because we can't get people involved. So it's very difficult when you want to sit here and talk about involvement, and then come to a meeting like this, which lasts four hours long, and you want people to be involved. involved. And again, I'm so grateful that we still have the opportunity of Zoom, which is only because of the pandemic, and we've got 40-plus people that are regularly attending, even if we do not see them. So I wanted to make mention of that. The last point that I'm going to make is that Teacher Appreciation Week is May 5th. And something that I've always thought about, and I wish that we could start working on on a little bit better basis, is having businesses adopt schools. These businesses get really harassed for various events throughout the year in our town. And we've got 24 schools, and it would be great if we could have businesses that partnered with each school, and then when we had different things that we needed, they could support us for these different types of events. Just thought that might be something that maybe we can work on in the future. Thank you all for your attention, greatly, greatly appreciate it.
John Muker, resident of Hamilton Township. I apologize for the timing on this, but I have one small item to bring up, and that has to do with the posting of the Zoom meeting recording onto the YouTube channel. Now, that YouTube channel is HTCSE's YouTube channel. I don't understand why it's done that way. It's been pretty reliable in the past, but I noticed this year that it's taking weeks, as much as a month, to get the videos posted. So I'm just requesting that we figure out how to get them posted within 48 hours of the meeting, since that's when people are most interested in seeing what's going on. So I don't know how to fix that, but I'm just asking the board to do something about that. Thank you.
So normally, I do not, we do not reply or answer, but I do feel the need to be able to answer that question for you, Mr. Muker. So you asked why, how we can get that up, or the meeting up in, as you said, in a more timely manner. We have nothing to do with that group or organization. That is a private, personal group that is led by individuals, and we cannot tell them, nor can we guide them on how they conduct themselves or how they bring those meetings to social media. That we are, that's out of our authority, and then we don't have the right to do that.
If you make the video available to me, I'll take on the task of getting it posted.
We don't video it, sir.
Sorry?
We don't, we don't have that available.
It's on the Zoom call. The Zoom call's being, being recorded.
Did they record it back there?
I've done it for my own business, it's a simple matter, there's no editing involved.
Live feed, sir. It's a live feed. Whomever wants to watch it.
So HTCSE is getting a hold of that recording, and they're posting it to the YouTube channel.
If you'd like to have that discussion with them, you're more than welcome to. I don't have the answers to that.
You, you have.
I just wanted to provide you with the answer to say that we cannot do that, and we don't have the right to tell them how to post their information.
I don't know how they have the right to post your meeting onto a YouTube channel, unless you gave them permission.
And as I said, you're more than welcome to have that conversation with them. Thank you. Janice Glonick, and I am just going to make a notation that Ms. Glonick did sign up for the second session in cursive.
Good job.
Okay, Janice Glonick, 432 Trinity Avenue. Okay, this is going to be short, which I'm sure will make all of you very happy. About two months ago, in North Jersey, there was a student who went into cardiac arrest, and luckily, somebody knew CPR. A senator up there decided it was necessary to create a bill that would make learning CPR mandatory in all high schools in New Jersey, which he's working on, which is a fantastic and very needed idea. However, we already put it into our system, I believe, or we're working on putting it into our system, which means we're ahead of the game, and that's a star for us. Also, if we continue to really teach cursive writing and incorporate it in fourth and fifth grades, so we become as good as the Catholic schools in writing cursive and reading it as well, that would be a second star for us. However, we will lose out on the third star, because Allentown beat us out, who has won up on us, and that they listen to, more attentively to their elementary teachers and test their students for having learning problems a lot sooner than we do, to get them the help they need. It would be great if we could catch up and test sooner like they do, so we can get a third star. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Glonick. Mr. Marchichika? Am I saying that correctly? I'm sorry. Marchichika, okay. Sorry, thank you.
Hey, so again, Joe Marchichika, M-A-R-C-H-I-C-A, I'm Hamilton resident, I'm a taxpayer, I'm also the acting chair of Our Revolution Trenton versus Public Education Committee, we're a community group.
Can you speak closer to the mic so we can hear you?
Sure. I think I'm a little too tall for where the mic was at. But I, were you able to hear that, or no?
Yes.
Okay, good, I won't repeat myself then. I'm glad the budget passed, thank you all for working on that. It's obvious, it takes a ton of work to do that, and certain folks don't always make it easy to get that work done, so thank you. I firmly believe the district's heading in the right direction. I also do want to note, to your point, Ms. Farrar, is it Dr. Farrar I was speaking? Dr. Farrar, thank you. That I was able to find the budget presentations just fine going through the Hamilton Township website, I was able to get to the Google Drive and everything, I was able to find a whole bunch of information. What I needed to Oprah was the McCorristan Charter application, because that was available nowhere. So I think that folks should consider that when they think about what is transparent and accountable, and what are really public schools and have their information available to, to the public to be able to review. And on that note, I want to also point out, you all do have the ability to appeal this legally. That is a legal action, it is not the same as filing complaints on a, on a pending charter school application. Once the charter school application is approved, you can make a legal appeal. This is the same thing as appealing a court decision, right? So understand, you have the power to do this, and if you choose to do this, which I would encourage you to do, the community will be behind you. Again, we have a petition that is now up to 796 signatures, the last time I checked. So there's plenty of people who don't want this, this thing to pass, who don't want to see their tax dollars go to a privately-run, unaccountable school. And more than that, they don't want to see that funding get stripped out of our public schools, because, you know this, you've been reviewing a budget for months now, how much of your budget is fixed costs? How much of that can't be transferred to a charter school? Are you going to fire teachers? Are we going to somehow sell buildings off? What are we going to do in order to take that funding that's stripped away from the public system and sent to a private, unaccountable school, in order to make those, those numbers match up? That's what we're facing if we're talking about charter schools. It is a tactic straight out of the Koch Brothers, Heritage Foundation, Betsy DeVos billionaire playbook, that's meant to destroy public education. That is what this is. I am not exaggerating. The people who came up with this concept have written about this, it is documented and has been reported on, as have voucher programs, which is currently a bill in the State Assembly somehow, which is another thing along the exact same lines. So if we want to have good public schools, and I firmly believe this district is heading towards where it needs to be, you can't strip funding out of a district that has 60, 70, 90-year-old buildings that need updates, you need new buildings. How are you going to do that when you're getting millions of dollars stripped away? How, how do you continue to feed into that, that working capital fund? How do you keep up with that? You're talking about being behind the eight ball, because the Christie administration put you all there by continuing to underfund and defund our public schools. This is another tactic, to do exactly that. And I want to urge all of you to take this seriously and do everything within your power to fight this thing. There are resources and organizations out there who have fought this battle in red states, who have fought this battle in states that do not have social safety nets because of it, that do not have public education systems anywhere near what we have in New Jersey. The reason we have that publication, public education system is because, as you said, Dr. McSheen, this is, a budget's a moral document. Where you send your money is what you care about. We've sent our money to our schools, let's keep doing that and not defund them. Like, it just boggles my mind that we're considering this in New Jersey in 2024. So, thank you.
Thank you. So that does conclude the hearing of the public. We are going to be going into executive session. Just a notation, we will not be coming out to take any action, we'll only be coming out to adjourn. So there will be no action taken after the executive session. Do we need a motion to go into exec, or we already voted? Can I?
Just doing whatever I feel like doing tonight.
Can I have a motion to go into executive session?
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass, thanks.